Good morning and welcome to today's Cobb County zoning hearing this October 18th, 2022. I'm going to turn things over to our zoning manager, John Peterson. He's going to walk us through today's zoning agenda. Yvonne, we do that. I noticed things were going quite quickly and it just tells you what kind of day I'm having. We're going to back up a little bit before we call this meeting to order. We're going to do our invocation and pledge. And in fact, I understand our pastor could not be with us. So if those who are here with us today, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. For those of you who are able and willing, please stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now our meeting is officially called to order. And with that, John, I'm going to turn things over to you if you can help us walk through today's agenda.
Thank you and good morning. Today's hearing will follow the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When a case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. Then after that, we're going to call to see if anyone here is opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that anyone opposed, please stand and raise their hand so they can be counted for the record. After recognizing both parties, they will be asked to come forward, be sworn in. And both parties will present testimony to the board at the front of the room at the lectern. It's important to note that each side gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a process to reserve your time and there's not a process to rebut what someone else says. So you want to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on the case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after that, the board would start to discuss the case at hand. And from the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. Then the board will make a decision to either approve or deny, hold or continue the matter at hand. There are some cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn and these cases will not be heard. First case is resounding case Z46 of 2022, Watmore LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Next case is resounding case Z47 of 2022, Angel Eye Studios 5 Incorporated. This case was withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard. Other business item number 22 of 2022, Robert A. Kerr and Rachel Kerr. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. And finally, other business item number 51 of 2022, Target Corporation. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have continued or held and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z7 of 2022, KM Homes. This case was continued by the staff until the November 15th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Z7 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z41 of 2022, Southern Gas Partners LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 15th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Z41 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z50 of 2022, Ram USA Properties LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 15th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Z50 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z55 of 2022, Kenneth B. Clary. This case was continued by the staff until the November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z55 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z56 of 2022, Isan Chetty. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z56 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z58 of 2022, Pulte Home Company. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z58 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z59 of 2022, Glenside Mapleton LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 15th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Z59 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z60 of 2022, Branch Acquisition Company LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z60 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z61 of 2022, Green Community Development LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 15th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Z61 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z65 of 2022, Dray Pack Investments LLC. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z65 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z66 of 2022, ADP Terramill LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z66 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z67 of 2022, SMB Investments Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z67 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z68 of 2022, The Revive Land Group LLC. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z68 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z69 of 2022, Beezer Homes LLC. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z69 will not be heard today. SLEP 5 of 2022, Parallel Towers 3 LLC, also known as Parallel Infrastructure LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLEP 5 will not be heard today. SLEP 11 of 2022, Glenside Mapleton LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 15th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So SLEP 11 will not be heard today. SLEP 13 of 2022, WH Storage LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLEP 13 will not be heard today. SLEP 14 of 2022, ADP Terramill LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLEP 14 will not be heard today. Other business item number 56 of 2022, Stein Investment Group. This case was continued by the staff until the November 15th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So other business item number 56 will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, there are some other cases on today's printed agenda which were scheduled to be heard. But it's my understanding that these cases that I'm about to go over need to be continued one more time. First case is resounding case Z49, Johnny Hastings and Integrity Development Group. Is the applicant present? Madam Chair and Board, it's my understanding that the applicant would like to continue this case to continue to work on their project for 30 more days. Is that correct?
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sheffield?
I make a motion to hold Z49 to the November Board of Commissioners meeting. I believe that is December 15th. I'm sorry, November 15th?
November 15th.
2022.
Is there any discussion amongst commissioners? All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries five zero. Your case is being continued. Thank you.
Thank you. Next case is, this case is actually on consent, resounding case Z64, Alliance Industrial Partners LLC. Madam Chair and Board, they need to work on the plan a little bit and we're waiting on an Army Corps approval. So the staff would ask the board to continue that until your December 20th zoning hearing date.
Yes, John, we have it on. Okay, so Commissioner Sheffield, that's in District 4.
Thank you. I make a motion to continue Z64 to the December 20th Board of Commissioners zoning hearing.
Second. Is there any discussion or questions? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next case is resounding case Z38 of 2022, David Pearson Communities Incorporated. Madam Chair and Board, it's my understanding that the applicant needs a little bit more time to put some finishing touches on their proposal. So the staff would ask the board to continue this case until your November 15th hearing date.
Commissioner Sheffield again. Yes.
I make a motion to continue Z38 to the November 15th Board of Commissioners zoning hearing.
Second. Any discussion or questions? We'll call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
I believe we have another one to add, John.
I have one more to be continued and that's other business item number 48 of 2022, Ava Glass. The applicant's attorney does want some more time to work on this with the neighbor, Madam Chair and Board. So the staff would ask the board to continue other business item number 48 until your November 15th hearing.
All right. Commissioner Gamble?
I'd like to make a motion to hold OB 48 until the November 15th, 2022 hearing.
Second.
No, I'm sorry. Continue, not hold.
Thank you, continue.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second on the amended motion.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Call the question. And the motion passes five zero. John, I believe there's another case to be added as well.
Not to be added, but just some clarification. On continued case. Slup 5. Is that under the shot clock?
The applicant's attorney has told the shot clock, so we're not under that currently. They've agreed to stop the clock while they get the Planning Commission information the Planning Commission has requested.
Okay.
So the clock is not ticking.
It's had a lot of continuances. I just want to make sure we weren't under that provision.
No, we're not.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just clarify what that means, John, for those who may not know?
For applications involving cell towers, the Board of Commissioners is under a shot clock from the Federal Communications Commission. I believe the shot clock's at 150 days. And, you know, the tower has to be heard within 150 days unless the time is told by the applicant, which has happened.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I believe we're good to go.
We have a couple more announcements to make before we start the consent agenda. First one is, I would like the people in today's audience, if you have a cellphone, please turn the volume off on your cellphones as the ringing does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. And any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if they made a campaign contribution of $250 or more to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this requirement is located on the table on the back of the room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Yes, go ahead, John.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for October 18th, 2022. Resounding case Z57 of 2022, Affshin Food Mart Incorporated. Request a rezoning from GAC to NRC for a convenience store at full fuel sales in Land Lot 20 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of Hicks Road and on the south side of Grindstone Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z57 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Parks Huff dated September 30th, 2022. And number two, staff comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z57?
No.
That direction is known opposed.
Chair, thank you. I just have a few items to update for Z57. And that is to include the letter of agreeable conditions from Parks Huff dated October 18th, 2022. The applicant is to submit a lighting plan to be approved by the District Commissioner no later than November 17th, 2022, and installed no later than December 17th, 2022. The hours of operation are to be from 6:00 a.m. until midnight, seven days per week. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Thank you. Is the applicant amenable to those conditions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next case is resounding case Z63 of 2022, Martine Turn. Request a rezoning from NS to NRC for beauty shop and retail in Land Lot 60 of the 17th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Austale Road and on the southwest side of Curtin Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z63 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on August 1st, 2022, with the District Commissioner to approve the final plan. Number two, District Commissioner to approve the building architecture. The building to meet the Austale Road design guidelines if remodeled or a new building is built. Number three, retail of beauty supply and hair care products only. Customers to park on the driveway, not in the grass. Number five, owner to remove the garage that straddles the rear property line or submit a lot combination so all buildings are in the subject property. Number six, fire department comments or recommendations. Number seven, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. And number eight, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case? Is she here? Okay, the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z63? That direction shows no one opposed. Moving into land use permits on consent agenda, LUP 17 of 2022. David Lu requests a temporary land use permit for outdoor storage of stone slabs and metal frames in Land Lot 1207 of the 16th District. The property is located on the east side of Harris Drive, north of Hazelwood Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 17 for 12 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, property owner to provide the zoning division every three months, 90 days. A report showing activities, progress, and timetable when the slabs will be moved. Is the applicant present? That direction shows the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 17? That direction shows no one opposed. LUP 18, Renana Borges McDonald requests a temporary land use permit to allow occupancy of an accessory structure in Land Lot 256 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Wesley Chapel Road, north of River Ridge Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 18 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, to be used for personal, family use only. Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 18? That direction shows no one opposed. LUP 19 of 2022, Word of Faith Family Worship Center Incorporated. Request a temporary land use permit renewal for a daycare facility in Land Lots 697 and 698 of the 18th District. The property is located on the west side of Riverside Parkway and on the north side of the Bluffs. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 19 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. And number two, DOT approved the traffic circulation plan. Is the applicant present? That direction shows the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 19? That direction shows there's no one opposed. And moving into other business items on the consent agenda. First one is other business item number 44 of 2022, which is to consider a stipulation and site plan amendment from Brent Step regarding OSC 5-17 of 2005 for property located at the southwest corner of Old Alabama Road and Cardell Road. The property is located in Land Lots 201 and 258 of the 18th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan last revised September 23rd, 2022, with the District Commissioner approving item modifications. Number two, cemetery buffer to be a 35-foot landscape buffer. Number three, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. Number four, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. And number five, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? That direction shows the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 44? That direction shows no one opposed. Other business item number 47 of 2022 is to consider a hardship sign variance for Riverside Epicenter LLC for property located in Land Lots 604 and 689 of the 18th District. The property is located at the southeasterly intersection of South Service Road and Riverside Parkway. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, revised site rendering submitted by Kevin Moore, October 6th, 2022. Number two, District Commissioner to approve the final sign location. And number three, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 47? That direction shows no one opposed. Other business item number 53 of 2022 is to consider a stipulation amendment for Davis Enterprises LLC regarding rezoning applications, E24 of 2022. The property is located on the southwest side of Cobb Parkway, north of Cedar Crest Road, in Land Lot 37 of the 20th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, applicant is not required to do a downstream lake pond study. Number two, all other standard stormwater management comments to be done. Number three, District Commissioner to approve the final stormwater plan. And number four, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? That direction shows the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 53? That direction shows no one opposed.
Commissioner Gamble?
John, in reviewing Cobb DOT comments, item G is in conflict with what we had approved originally when this rezoning was approved. The Fairway Villas did not grant an easement to that private driveway. But item G on DOT comment says to put the driveway there. So I don't know if we need to remove it or...
Yes, let's go ahead and strike that.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to add to the recommendations that we strike G from the Cobb DOT recommendations.
Second. Is there any discussion? John, did you need to add something for our consideration?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay. All right, we'll call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Okay. Next case is other business item number 54 of 2022, which is to consider a stipulation amendment for 3380 Chastain Meadows LLC and 170223330 Chastain Meadows LLC regarding applications, Z51 of 1995. Property located on the east side of Chastain Meadows Parkway and on the north side of Chastain Meadows Court in Land Lots 427, 428, 437, and 438 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, stipulation number nine from the letter of stipulations to be replaced with signage to meet sign code. Number two, renderings and location site plan contained in the other business packet with the District Commissioner approving the final renderings. And number three, fire department comments or recommendations contained in the other business packet. Is the applicant present for OB 54?
Yes.
That direction shows the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 54? That direction shows no one opposed. And last on the consent is other business item number 55 of 2022, which is to consider a reduction of lot size for crematory from required two acres to 1.75 acres for 4283929 Delaware LLC. The property is located on the western end of Oak Ridge Commerce Way, north of Oak Ridge Road, in Land Lot 377 of the 18th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, lot size reduced to 1.75 acres. Number two, the landscape buffer along the west property line to be 60 feet. Number three, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. And number four, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. Is the applicant present? That direction shows the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 55? Two. We have two opposed, Madam Chair and Board, so we'll pull that one off consent and put it in its normal order.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other matters to be added to consent?
Yes.
Okay.
OB 57?
Okay, let me go and read that one in. Other business item number 57 of 2022 is to consider a site plan amendment for Clydesdale Holdings LLC regarding rezoning applications, Z74 of 1995, for property located at the southeast intersection of Floyd Road and White Boulevard and Land Lots 31 and 42 of the 17th District. Is the applicant present? That direction shows the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 57? That direction shows there's no one opposed.
I'm prepared to put this on consent, but I noticed that Robin Meyer is here. I'm not sure if you're here to speak on this case, but if so, I guess we'll just hear it. I don't know that the protocol is...
She had one clarification, if that can be added into it. And I submitted the revised site plan and landscape plan that was just submitted to John.
Right, and I'll cover that in my comments, yeah.
The only thing Robin wanted changed, and we're fine with it, is under my stip letter number three, it says to be approved by the District Commissioner. She wanted approved, other uses to be approved by other business. We're fine with that.
Okay.
If it's under three, just make that other business and...
Robin, is that your suggestion for this application? Okay, thank you.
I told her I would make that change.
Okay, John, if you would include the following. That the final site plan is to be reviewed by the county with the final approval by the District Commissioner. The landscaping plan is to be reviewed by the county arborist with final approval by the District Commissioner. Other uses are to come before the Board of Commissioners as an other business item.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Pardon, I'm sorry. I forgot to add all staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Okay, thank you. All right. Your second still stands?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Call the question. The motion passes five zero. Are there any other matters to be added to consent today? All right, with that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments? Is there any questions or comments? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. For anyone who was here with a matter on consent, except for other business item 55, you are free to leave at this time, as we've already dispositioned your matter. Thank you.
Okay, moving into the continued and held part of the agenda. First case we're going to hear today is rezoning case Z52 of 2022, Newport 360 Capital LLC. Request rezoning from ZRC for multifamily residential in land lot 363 of the 16th District. The property is located on the east side of Town Park Drive, north of Town Park Lane. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z52? Let the record show there's two people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward. We've sworn in.
Always ask, is there anyone in support, John?
Is there anyone here in support of rezoning case Z52?
Thank you.
Please stand up.
You never know.
And let the record show there's no one here in support.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Morris is...
Besides the applicant.
Yes.
Okay, there's two, three people here in support of rezoning case Z52. Let the record show there's now four people in support of...
Okay, they keep coming. Whenever you're ready, Karen.
Good morning, commissioners and madam chair. I'm Kevin Moore here, and pleased to represent Newport 360 Capital in this rezoning application. To identify the property that we're talking about here today, it's kind of highlighted or outlined in black on your screen. This is the zoning map of the particular area. You'll note that the nearby and adjacent is the 575 interchange with Chastain Road. This property sits on Town Park Drive. It's part of a overall development that is a, today is a mixture of retail, hotel, town homes, and office. It's really oftentimes referred to as Town Park. You can see the adjacent zonings of office mid-rise, general commercial, UVC, which is urban village concept. This property, as highlighted, is zone general commercial. From a future land use point of view, as I'm sure you are familiar, in this greater town center area, it's one of two regional activity centers we have in Cobb County. There are only two, and this property is within the regional activity center on your future land use map, as you might imagine, further supporting the type of development that's being proposed here today, and further supporting the requested rezoning to RRC. But importantly also, that general commercial category located in a regional activity center is a viable category, so it can be used for all purposes related to general commercial and its intensity as well. Now, what is actually being proposed? The proposal here, for your consideration, is a rezoning to RRC for a multifamily community to be built on this location. Currently, this location is an office building. That office building was built many years ago that is now basically past its economic utility. It is not capable of economically being renovated because of the age. And as a result, they've come forward, after marketing this property for an extensive period of time, come forward with a proposal for a multifamily at this location, a total or a maximum of 250 units. This, as you can see from the site plan, is a wrapped product, and by that, that's a term that simply means that the parking is wrapped by the building itself, and so there's an actual parking structure, a parking deck. What's being proposed is a maximum five-story building of 250 homes and units on this property. And again, we're not using surface parking, we're using the building to wrap the parking structure, which, number one, is efficient and aesthetically pleasing, because you do not have fields of parking, but it's also the most expensive way to construct, and that is, building parking decks is extremely expensive, which also lends itself to the high-end nature of what's being proposed here in terms of the full amenities that's being proposed by Newport for this project and for these future residents, multiple amenity areas contained within the proposed project. To give you a sense further about this area, because I think it's vitally important in looking at the area itself and the component parts that this is, really adding to the Town Park area, a true mixed use. Today, you have over 50,000 square feet of retail and restaurant. You have an Embassy Suites Hotel. That's to your left, off of Chastain Road. As you're looking at this, you also see the townhomes that are built next to the hotel and next to the retail as you're coming up Town Park Drive. If you can see where that's Chastain Road and Town Park. And then you have the office complexes that we identified earlier. And then you have this property that's proposed for multifamily. What is missing in Town Park is actually that component, that multifamily component that will continue to keep the vitality, the energy, and the dynamics that are present in Town Park to continue the success for the future of the retail, of the townhomes, and of the offices. And I think that bears out when you see the support that we have from those different elements for this project. Now, turning to some questions and issues that have come up during the pendency of this application. Number one, we were asked about stormwater. What this is, is an exhibit from our preliminary stormwater analysis that was detailed in nature, that was provided in response to direct questions from the Bells Ferry Civic Association, which they lauded and said how appreciative they were of this exhibit and also of the analysis that was provided and submitted. As you can see, you see that where we're identified as the site, that's 575. Our site currently has been and always drains to 575. It goes down 575, actually north, goes under 575. That's part of the state-controlled drainage system along the interstate. It goes under 575 and ultimately to Chastain Lakes. That's how this property has drained. This property is only, is small, but it's also part of an overall drainage basin. What does that mean? It means it's one piece of property inside a drainage basin that drains to Chastain Lake. That's why it's there. That overall drainage basin is 300 acres of drainage basin in this town center area that drains through this area to Chastain Lake. We are less than 1% of the drainage basin. Now, currently, this property is woefully short in terms of meeting current stormwater management standards. What we have shown is that we're going to increase the detention and stormwater capacity for this property by 74% over its current condition. What we're going to be providing is underground detention, as well as underground soil infiltration for water quality. What we're going to do is substantially increase the stormwater management as it's related to this property. This property does not drain to what you see at the top left, which says Town Park Master Detention Facility. That's a separate detention facility for most of the office that is more towards the west, that drains to that facility, which goes to Chastain Lakes. We do not drain into that facility, have nothing to do with that facility, and have nothing to do with any issues that have come up with that facility. Likewise, we have nothing to do with how the state maintains its drainage facilities. All we can do and have control over is our stormwater management, and we have an excellent plan for that. Mr. Carver has testified to that in front of the planning commission, and can do so again today. What we are doing is addressing the stormwater, all that we can do and all that can possibly be done. Without question, there is not a stormwater issue with this project, without question, unequivocally. Next, we've also addressed a condition with height. There was some concern about the height of our proposal versus the height of the surrounding buildings. As we already identified, the surrounding buildings include office buildings that are zoned under general commercial, as well as office mid-rise. Our proposal now stands at or below the surrounding heights of those buildings. It stands way below the Embassy Suites Hotel and at or below the adjoining office buildings that are part of the Town Park complex. We did that because when we initially proposed this application, it was for 285 units and it was six stories. As a result of our many communications and meetings with, not only with the townhome residents, with the office park, with the retail, we lowered that by a story to five, so we could be consistent in terms of the height, as well as reduce the overall density from 285 to 250. So without question, height is not an issue in terms of the consistency with the surrounding developments and existing developments. And I also think it's extremely important in your consideration, that is, what supports this application right now, as you have it today? What supports this application? Number one, the Town Park Village Homeowners Association HOA Board has submitted a letter, which is part of your file, part of your record, unequivocally supporting this application, not just, we don't object, support this application for what it brings to their area, to their homeownership. We also met with individual residents of that same townhome development directly across the street, who initially were objecting, and ultimately received their written support, saying that they no longer objected due to what we had included as part of our stipulations and as part of our agreements. In addition, this project's written support from Fairway Investments, that's the owner of the retail project that we just identified, over 50,000 square feet of retail, that retail project directly across the street from this property, that owner actively supports this project and submitted a written letter to that point because of what it does to the future vitality of Town Park. It's also supported in writing by a letter from the owner of the office component of Town Park. Adventist Realty Trust likewise submitted a letter, which is part of the record, supporting this project. That means that every adjacent owner, stakeholder, be it a residential homeowner, a retail owner, or an office owner, has in writing supported this project. If you live there, if you work there, if you own there and have a significant interest there, you have put in writing that you support this rezoning and support this project. And I think that's remarkable, and I think it's a testament to the applicant, but it's further a testament to the project itself and what it will do. Lastly, this project is recommended for approval by your Cobb County professional staff, and ultimately was recommended for approval by your Cobb County Planning Commission, once we reduced it to the 250 and have the stipulations that we have included in our package, all from the community meetings and interaction exchange that we've had. Unquestionably, every single approved governmental document and adjacent homeowner recommends approval...
Mr. Moore.
...of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from opposition. You'll have a total of 10 minutes to speak.
Chairman, if you don't mind, there's a timer on the podium, so you can see it as it clicks down, okay?
Okay.
So when you start talking, we'll start the clock.
Okay.
Hi, commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Karen Huck. I'm a 22-year resident of Chastain Lakes, a neighborhood receiving runoff from this proposed development. I am representing the Bells Ferry Civic Association today as well.
Ma'am, can you help us in just coming closer to the microphone?
Bells Ferry Civic sent a letter to the commissioners with our concerns. We have two of them. We still do have concerns about the impervious surfaces in this dense development. On the engineer's plan, it shows an 81% impervious surfaces, which means they're going to have to do underground detention. The Summit Engineering Group wrote that it was 68.4% impervious, so I don't know if that's been reconciled yet or not. Our second concern is the many, many apartments that are already in the area with four more in the pipeline. Underground detention requires stringent routine maintenance to work properly. According to the Georgia Stormwater Management Manual, they can improve water quality by removing heavy amounts of sediment. However, common problems are sediment buildup, clogging in the inlet and outlet structure, and maintenance requires some OSHA training for the person who's performing the maintenance. Sediment needs to be removed by a vacuum or boom. Chastain Lakes was damaged in 2019 by the failure of the retention pond, which you, I guess, saw on the map up there, because inspection and maintenance was not performed. Your next one? Underground detention, we still question whether it provides enough pollutant removal. During an earlier planning commission meeting, well, let me go back, and we have concerns, I'm sorry, I'm a little jumpy here. We also have concerns about sediment runoff when the site is going to be built upon. During an earlier planning commission meeting about townhomes on Way Green Road, similar concerns were expressed, with an escrow account suggested to ensure monies to mitigate damages to downstream lakes. We think this is a good idea, because historically, construction near Chastain Lakes has resulted in sediment damage. When Chalker Elementary School construction was performed, sediment damaged Chastain Lakes. The Chastain Lakes Board had to litigate to mitigate that damage. And we won that suit. Jim Chapman's Brookhaven Development Construction along Chastain Road, that retention pond failed and red mud sediment poured in over an extended period of time. I had to report that one myself. Nobody was coming out to inspect what was being built, and Jim Chapman wasn't there. And as earlier stated, the Argonaut Retention Pond failed in 2019, and the Chastain Lakes HOA Board again had to hire an attorney. We would like to point out that the state EPD does not provide any help in these circumstances, as Cobb County is a, quote, "local issuing authority." So our understaffed stormwater management department is it. An escrow fund would provide help to mitigate possible damage. And this would be when, you know, when they're building it. It is such a small site, three, was it three?
Three acres, 3.4 acres.
3.4 acres, and you're talking about 250 apartments, parking, amenities. It's just very... Another, well, this is showing some of the sediment that was coming into our legs from Brookhaven, and this happened over and over and over, till finally I figured out where the mud was coming from. And this was an open storm drain that, when I went up there to look, was a really big safety hazard. Our other concern is all the apartments in the area and the apartments to be built. These are the apartments by the AMC Theater. You can see they're pretty much, you know, done. Well, there's more of them down the way. A year ago, I was here about the Regal Cinema Site, which is to be built. This was a year ago, and I would also like to point out, while I have y'all's attention, that this has become an eyesore and a public hazard. The building is open to the elements with missing roof parts. People are going inside. You can see where somebody cut a hole, and the water was running out from the building. Somebody had gone inside and turned on the water. So we feel like a stipulation should have been adopted at that time to secure the site and make sure the building was demolished. And then another apartment complex that's going to be asked about today is at the Hidden Forest Development Area on Big Shanny. I believe they're also having to use underground detention. And the fourth one is, that's been approved, is behind the Home Depot on Barrett. I think that's going to be built after we get that $36 million flyover road completed. Lastly, just, this is while I have your attention. Chastain Road is really deteriorating. There is deep fissures running up and down the lanes, and we have asked and asked, and it's just not being addressed. And I also would like to point out, I wish this was a walkable, bikeable area, but it's not. There's bike lanes, there's never been anybody in the bike lanes, it's too busy. There was public transportation, buses coming down through there, those were cut. So anyway, thank you for allowing me to address these important issues. And just in keeping, we do, I mean, our legs are very important to us. We've been there 22 years. We've seen lots of sediment come in, and, you know, we just can't take for granted that it's all going to be done correctly, because we've seen many times where it hasn't been, you know, things have gone wrong, and it's been up to our neighborhood to file litigation to get compensation. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this matter? With that, I'll turn things over to our commissioner.
Ms. Huck brought up some additional issues, not really pertaining to this, but I did want to mention. I have reported twice the cracks and potholes on Chastain, and they are, DOT will be addressing that very soon, until everything can be... that very soon, until everything can be, until the, Chastain itself can get on the resurfacing list first lost. So I did want to address that. I did talk to JD this week about it, again. So, thank you, Ms. Huck. I'm gonna start with Carl.
Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater.
Good morning, Carl.
Good morning.
There was a hydrology, a preliminary hydrology study done that's incorporated in the packet.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know you commented that that was acceptable, and a final study will be submitted at the time of plan review, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And can you kind of explain, I think Mr. Moore, in his presentation, said 1% is going to Chastain Lakes?
This site is about 1% or less than the overall basin. So there's about 335 acres draining to the Chastain Lakes, and this site is less than 1% of that basin, so it's a very small amount of the basin.
Okay. Is that to their detention or the regional detention?
It's not, it's not draining to that stormwater management pond in Town Park. It drains down, the drainage swells along 575, and then under 575 into their lake.
Okay.
Their map is correct, the way it's drawn.
So I do want to enter for the record the preliminary hydrology study, and I can give you a copy of that for the record. I, I know Chastain Lakes has had other issues with drainage into their lake. And I know we have addressed, at times, other, the Argonaut, and I know that Dave Braden is, you've probably been out there too.
I haven't been out, out there to that particular site.
Okay.
I do know that the stormwater management pond that was part of the Town Park was, failed a couple of years ago, and it was repaired last year.
Okay. So is this, is this gonna affect that?
No. This does not drain into that pond at all.
Anything else you can add to?
Well, the, the underground detention will, the, the pond that's there was built back in the 80s or 90s, under a completely different criteria of what stormwater management is designed for now. So it's pretty small. The current design with the large underground detention pipes will provide more, a lot more volume, and then the pipes are embedded in stone, allowing the infiltration. So it's providing runoff reduction, as well as water quality due to the infiltration. So it, it's really providing a lot better situation for that particular site.
Okay. And is the, it's my understanding that the impervious surface is at 68.5% now?
I, I think the preliminary report said that the existing site impervious is about 56 to 60% impervious.
The existing, but what, what is?
The proposed site may be 80-plus percent, but the stormwater, they'll have to compensate for that increased amount in the stormwater detention design.
Well...
They can increase the runoff, and they're gonna actually reduce the runoff with the infiltration.
Okay. Well, I, I was under the impression that it was at under 70% now.
Now?
But, I mean, with this proposed development.
I'd have to look back at their calculations and see, but that would be verified at the time of plan review.
Okay. Well, I, I could make it a maximum of 70% in my stip, so that'll take care of that. Because under RRC, they're actually allowed 80%, correct?
Correct. I think that's correct.
Okay.
But again, they're, they're at 80%. They still can't increase, even if it was 70 or 80%, they still can't increase the runoff. They'll have, it just makes their underground pipes bigger or longer.
Right. Okay. Did you have a question for Carl? Sorry.
Carl, on the underground detention, who is responsible for the maintenance of that?
They will be. They'll have to enter in, at the time of land disturbance permitting, they'll enter into a maintenance agreement with Cobb County Stormwater, and it requires them to provide the maintenance. On the underground, it's inspected a couple of times a year, cleaned out as necessary.
Thank you.
That was one of my questions. The other two that I had, so one is with regards to the impact to Chastain Lake. I'd like, I just want to get some clarity on that. It sounds like the stormwater plan being proposed, does that reduce the overall contribution to Chastain Lake? Or is it being, is it, is it consistent, and with the increase in impervious surface, that increase is being reduced?
It, it should reduce from what's going there now, from the site.
Okay. So the impact should be lesser?
Yes.
And, second question is, it was mentioned about an 81% versus a 64% discrepancy. Have you seen any documentation on that?
I think the 54, 56% was what's existing out at the site currently.
Mm-hmm. With the office building there.
Yeah, with the office building and parking there.
Understood.
The application lists about 80% impervious.
Yeah. Which is normal for a site like this.
Okay. And yeah, I was just gonna say, as a part of the stip, including the maintenance agreement, just for the recurring, for enforceability's sake.
Just for clarification, there was mention that there are issues at the lake, at Chastain Lake. What are some of the issues there?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, no, that's okay. There was a mention with respect to issues at Chastain Lake, and I was just curious to know what those issues are.
Well, it could be sediment, like she's talked about. I'm not personally familiar with the problems at Chastain Lake, that would be before my time, so I'd have to check the records and see. But I, I do know the upstream stormwater management pond did fail a couple of years ago, and, and sediment escaped from that pond downstream to the Chastain Lakes.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, but you mentioned that this wouldn't impact Chastain Lakes.
It should not, no.
It should make the volume more, it should increase the volume with the underground?
Oh, yeah. There's gonna be a lot more volume, storage volume on this site with the underground pipes.
Okay.
Carl, you said it's draining under 575?
It drains, it drains along the right-of-way of 575, and then passes under 575 to Chastain Lake.
So it eventually does?
It, it eventually gets to the lakes.
Okay.
It's about 3,000 feet, I think.
Commissioner, I have a question for Carl. Carl, there was discussion about escrow and having funds set aside to address any future stormwater runoff impacts. Is that facilitated through Cobb County, or is that in agreement with the applicant?
No. We do not have any system like that set up to monitor, manage, or anything like that. The state has laws in place for sites that are over one acre disturbed, that allows for third-party claims. And those are administered through the state EPD, then administered through the Cobb County Community Development, Erosion Patrol Division.
Interesting.
So...
Okay. Did you have a follow-up to that?
Thank you. I feel like we've done an escrow before in one of our, it wasn't directly tied to stormwater management, but...
Not that I'm familiar with.
Well, she's looking for roads.
Yeah. That's what's saying, for something else.
Yeah. I don't know of any for stormwater management. And the case she mentioned, the developer did not agree to, to do that on Z7, so I don't, I don't know if it's been done before or not, or if we can consider that, or I guess we'd have to...
Several years ago, the state adopted the, the Clean Water Act, which allows for third-party lawsuits.
Okay. Commissioner Gabor.
Carl, as a follow-up to, you said that, you know, it would be filed with the EPD, and then through our community development. Is that something that the homeowners can do outside of the rezoning application? How does that process work?
The, it has to be enforced by our community development, through the erosion control laws and acts, and then through inspections. EPD can be called out for an inspection, but if they reach violations, then there's daily penalties, plus the third-party lawsuit. It's all spelled out in the Clean Water Act, and the, that's adopted by the state EPD.
But as far as setting up an escrow through the third party, through the EPD?
No, it's, it's purely a lawsuit.
It's purely a lawsuit. Thank you.
And then, Carl, you touched on the quality of the water runoff, or stormwater runoff, but the opposition, I think, provided a slide that referred to pollutants in the runoff, or having some concern with respect to that. And I think in your comments, you referred to water quality. Is there some feature of the underground detention that will address that?
The, the runoff, the, the large pipes, the storage pipes, basically on their design, are, they're perforated all the way around. So as the water builds up in them, it goes out into the stone, and then infiltrates down into the ground. It's providing water quality and runoff reduction at the same time.
Okay.
Our, our code calls for runoff reduction or water quality, not both, but when you provide runoff reduction, you're getting both.
Interesting. Anything else for Carl?
Thank you, Carl. Okay, Amy Diaz, you're up next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, we do have a traffic study, and I know Town Park, I did check with Cobb County DOT on the crash, I mean Cobb County Police on the crash data, recent one, and there were only two crashes on Town Park from Chastain to, I guess, Busby, in the last couple of years. So, that's, I don't see the impact there. But regarding the traffic, Chastain Road is pretty busy right now, anyway.
Yes.
So can you kind of tell us the level of service, and if it will be worse, or better, or the same?
So the level of service on Chastain Road itself ranges from a D to an F, depending on what movement you're looking at. Overall, the worst intersection looking in the future was a level service D, sorry, level service E. But there are certain movements that are operating at level service F because of the heavy volume. The thing is about this development is because there's such a good network in the area, trips from this development are distributing in a lot of different directions, and that means that the percentage increase on any given movement is very small. One of the ones that's a level service F right now is the southbound ramp, coming from 75 onto Chastain Road. Currently, the AM volume is over 1,100 vehicles, and they're adding another, you know, like five vehicles to that. So it's, it's just the, the fact that they're not giving much percent increase, that means that, that they have, don't have a lot of impact. Not that there's not a lot of traffic in that area already.
But my concern was, what will this, you know, 250, if that's what's approved, add to that?
Yeah. Again, because it's distributing, it's, the, the levels of service changes, there's actually a table in the report that show the various movements, and how much between build and no build increase. The, the biggest one for an intersection overall was three seconds. So yes, it will add a little bit of delay, but it won't really be perceptible.
And there is a light there. There's a signal.
Right. That's, that's on average. I was asked by the planning commission how much it would increase the queue at Chastain Road going southbound on Town Park, and it would basically increase it by one to two vehicles. So, again, it's perceptible, but it's, it's reasonable.
And then, are both entrances right in and right out? Or is there any left turns movement on the site?
There is, there is left turns at the, one of the, has a median cut.
The one that, why don't you?
The one that has a median break, one that's located at Town Park Lane, has a left turns there.
But not towards the, not the first one at the, closest to the signal?
That is the one closest to the signal. The other one is further north.
Full movement?
Yeah. The other one is blocked by a median.
Is there enough distance there?
Yeah, well, it's an existing intersection, so there's already turning movements there. So...
And there's a cut in the median?
And there's a cut in the median.
Okay.
Yeah. We did make some notes that they will have to ensure that they have sufficient site distance, because there's a lot of trees in the median, and, and so wherever they have it, they, they'll have to put the left turn lane in if they have the left turns, and they'll have to make sure they make site distance.
And that will be required at plan review?
Correct.
Is there any? How many?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
You're fine. Thank you both. Question that I have is more so around the confluence of events. So there were several development, new developments, new construction that was mentioned as a part of opposition's presentation. Are they using similar roadways here? Is there a compounded effect based upon those coming in, or are they dispersed in other areas?
It depends on what development you're looking at. I mean, the ones that are closest to here will use some of the same intersections, but there's not one right, right next to it. I think the closest one is the one off of Town Park, where the movie theater used to be. And so some of those intersections do overlap, yeah.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I was just curious on what that impact might look like, considering...
But there is student housing on Town Park, at the other end.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if the analysis here of the one to two cars was kind of before or after those would come in, so...
So the, this did use a, what we call a, a growth rate, to kind of grow all the traffic, to, to allow for other development? I'm pulling that percentage for you now.
Thank you.
They may be harder there.
So they had an annual growth rate of 1%. So 1% per year, but again, these traffic volumes are pretty big, so 1% can actually compound up pretty quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
And are sidewalks already on the frontage, or would they have to add those?
I don't remember if, can you zoom in on the frontage, GIS?
Not, not like it, but I can't. I don't know. Well, if they're not there, they will have to provide frontage sidewalks and curbing.
Correct, yeah. It would also be in our comments, you know, if they don't have it, then they have to, they have to add it. But that's a development standard.
Right. Okay. And... Fire marshal. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning.
Um, I'm, uh, had Josh Davis, um, and you working on the, um, the state fire marshal code for the distance between entrances, if it's more than two-hundred units. And, um, I have an email from Josh saying that, um, the proposed trade-offs by the designer offers equal or better fire protection to not meeting the separation of access roads. Um, I think they were short eighteen feet versus a hundred as previously submitted, and it's not considered a variance when the designer provides equal or better fire protection when the letter of the code cannot be met. So they have satisfied all that they need to do for that?
For the most part. Uh, they have agreed to widen a road, which is, under normal s- conditions, not necessary for that, uh, secondary access road because it's not what we would deem an aerial apparatus access road, but they have agreed to widen the roads, w- roads some. And then on that, uh, remote secondary access entrance, they have agreed to lengthen that as much as possible. Uh, so that's good. And then they have agreed to, uh, some equivalencies that we will address during pla- during plan review.
Well, I can address that too in my STIPS. If they can't read it, they'll have to go down.
I'm sorry.
If they, if they can't meet the fire code, they'll have to reduce the number of units to two-hundred in order to, um, comply with the state law.
Yep. Be, well, we feel pretty confident that, uh, everything else can be addressed on plan review. We've had some very good conversations with them, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Moore, can you come back up? Do you want to address impervious?
I can, I can clarify. Um, the proposed impervious surface area for this project is sixty-eight point five percent. There was a discrepancy in the initial plan, but again, remember, we've reduced that down, um, and, uh, the project civil professional engineer has confirmed the sixty-eight point five percent number, which we were trying to get it under seventy percent, even though it's allowed up to eighty, uh, but that's what we were attempting to do, and the civil engineer's confirmed that. He confirmed it again this morning, morning.
Okay. And we discussed some of those, um, requirements of student housing ordinance that you, um, are agreeable to putting in place here?
Yes. Even though this, it's really not a proposed student, um, uh, at all, but, um, that, I believe the conditions that you're speaking of that are put in here is to, just to ensure we have the same level of security plans that are reviewed by local law enforcement and so forth.
Right. And I know that's in your October tenth STIP letter.
And it is in that letter, yes.
The security plan with police. Um, but there are few, a couple others that I want to make sure. Um, maximum height of fifty-five feet, which is part of this, of student housing ordinance.
Let's see. If, if that's what it needs to be, uh?
Maximum height of fifty-five feet.
I don't know, wow, how are we?
Fifty-five feet.
They do.
How many stories?
From the front. Isn't that correct? Right. Are we good there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. That's correct.
Okay. Um, and you agreed to work with Town Center CID and DOT on the ramp, proposed future ramp?
If it ever comes about, yes, we would coordinate with them.
It's, for just informa- public information, it's part of the Town Center CID's master plan, but it's a future project that, um, really isn't set in stone or has
No.
funding at this point, but in the future, if that ever happens, we want to make sure that this isn't built on top of that, that there's room.
We'll, we would coordinate with them to, to the extent that's necessary, correct.
Okay. And, um, also the maximum impervious, even though it's eighty percent in the code, I'm going to request, um, or require maximum seventy percent.
Maximum seventy percent impervious would be correct, Commissioner.
Okay. Um, does anybody else have questions? Kevin? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Um, will there be gates or fences, um, for this property? There are, there are a number of emails where surrounding residents are concerned about crime spilling over to the property. Kevin, can you come to the mic, please? There were a number of emails received with respect to residents' concerns with respect to crime from the property. Will there be fences surrounding the perimeter of the property that, um, abut any of the other, um, well, I see butts I five seventy-five.
Right.
I mean, I don't see any immediate, yeah, I don't see any immediate residential.
There is not. We, we've agreed to a full security plan, the, uh, this will be highly, have, have a secure plan, um, and, and management plan that's reviewed by the local, uh, precinct, really is what happens, the local law enforcement for the county on an annual basis as part of that security, full security plan. And also the ones that, that you saw, those emails from, we met with those residents, uh, and once they became familiar with the type of project that we were proposing here and as well as the conditions, including the security plans and those types of things that are here, uh, that addressed there. They were fully addressed and, and felt very comfortable at that point because of that.
Okay.
Yeah. They're adding the security plan with police and cameras and other. And also the lighting component you have in your STIP letter.
Right.
Um, but I want to make sure it doesn't spill over.
Correct.
The same that's in the, um, purpose-built student housing. And then I had one other remark. Um, I know you reduced this from two-eighty-five to two-fifty. Are you willing to go down anymore to, to help with traffic or stormwater and other issues?
Um, we have discussed it and looked at it to see what we could do in that regard, um, and we could reduce this, uh, to a maximum of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine units, which is even a further reduction, and that still fits and provides the same type of development, but it can be to, to two-hundred-and-twenty-nine maximum, which I think will help with all of those elements.
Okay.
There's an addis that says that, um, you have not because you ask not.
That's right.
Worth asking.
Hey, always ask.
Are you going to do final elevations? The final elevations?
Yeah, in my, in my STIPS. My motion I made. Okay, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Um, we had several meetings with the neighbors and the townhomes. Bells Ferry Civic, uh, I know was, um, in attendance, and Deborah Dance, my planning commissioner. So, um, you know, I think all in all, we've tried to work out everything to, um, a viable agreement here, but, um, I will make a motion to approve Z fifty-two with, um, in addition to the October tenth letter from Mr. Moore, um, additional stipulations with, um, a maximum height of fifty-five feet, um, the security plan and lighting plan in requirements in the purpose-built student housing, a maximum of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine units, um, the applicant to work with the Town Center CID and, and DOT, Cobb DOT and GDOT for future ramp project, um, maximum impervious surface of seventy percent, uh, s- um, final site plan and elevations to be approved by the district commissioner with review by Bells Ferry Civic and neighbors, um, stormwater management comments from Carl in, in our book and stated, as stated today, um, landscape plan to be approved by, uh, county arborist and district commissioner with review by Bells Ferry Civic and neighbors, and the fire marshal comments, and all staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, and also the, I guess this is standard, development standards, but the underground detention to be maintained by the owner and, um, to be maintained by the owner, um, and that's all.
All right. Is there a second?
Commissioners?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll share again from some of the emails. Um, some residents have requested that we maintain the areas green space. The future land use of this area is a rack, which is one of the highest intensity development, um, sections of our code, and so I, while I can appreciate that desire, um, you know, the rack does accommodate for higher intensity types of development, and I believe that this development does comport with that, and so, yeah. I'm amenable to supporting this and just want to share with the, um, residents that you've been mindful of their concerns and balancing the implications of the rack with, you know, the interests of the citizens. All right. Hearing no further comments or questions, we'll call the question. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, next case is rezoning case Z sixty-two. Elmer Sabrian requests a rezoning from NRC to CRC for an automotive paint body repair shop and service facility in Landlots seven eighty and seven eighty-one of the nineteenth district. Property is located on the north side of Amos Drive, west of Ossdale Road. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for rezoning case Z sixty-two, Elmer Sabrian? Is there anyone here opposed to this zoning case?
No.
And chair and board is very unusual, but, um,
It is very unusual.
But at the planning commission level, the planning commission did recommend it be denied.
Okay. Commissioner Sheffield? Yeah, I, I know, again, sometimes we give consideration for the applicant.
Well, you know, we, we typically do, and I, I reached out to the applicant on yesterday, so.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm going to assume that he was very well aware of the appointment, uh, of the hearing this morning.
Okay.
Um, so with that, I support, uh, the PC and staff recommendation for denial.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I make a motion to deny the application request of Z sixty-two, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. I'll second it. There are any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Okay. And moving into the other business agenda, first item on the agenda is other business item number forty-one of twenty-twenty-two, which is to consider a stipulation and site plan amendment for Terwiga Pappas Multifamily Partners LLC regarding rezoning application Z twenty-six of two thousand and seven for property located at the southeast corner of Big Shanty Road and Forest Court in Landlots five oh one and five oh two of the sixteenth district. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number forty-one?
Three.
Three? Okay. Let's direct, so there's three people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in.
No one in support?
Is there anyone here in support of other business item forty-one? We have one person. I've got one friend.
In anticipation of, um, opposition, I want to bring in the house, so you can keep this one as yours. So let's see if this is a bumper that will be here.
Taking a break from the home search. Sorry. The extra tape will go right here.
I didn't notice that you had left. Good morning, Mr. Moore.
Good morning, Commissioner. Um, again, I'm Kevin Moore. I'm here on behalf of the applicant in this other business application. Please note it's not a rezoning, uh, it's an other business application for site plan approval, here on behalf of Terwiga Pappas. Uh, this, wanted to, um, almost do a little bit of context and history for the board on this, on this property. Uh, and what you've got up on your screen right now is the GIS, the zoning map that we've seen before, the aerial, and so just to get you where, uh, you're focused on, the, the property that's highlighted, um, is almost all of it, but the property that's highlighted there on your screen in the middle is called Town Village. Um, to your right, uh, is, uh, five seventy-five. Just to the south, you'll start to see where it says GC, RRC. That's Town Center Ring Road right there, so that's, just below that is going to be Town Center Mall. So this sits just north of Town Center Mall, and you can see that, uh, this, uh, property, which you see all of it's owned PVC for planned village concept. This was a fifty-acre tract that was rezoned in two thousand and eight. Uh, it was an assemblage of forty-nine. It was an assemblage of 49 different parcels. It was an entire subdivision, in fact called Hidden Forest, that was assembled, put together as a single project called Town Village. It was rezoned in two thousand and eight, so several years ago rezoned to PVC. The rezoning approved at that time all of the project parameters that dealt with setbacks, density, and so forth, and impervious. And in fact, it approved at that time up to 1,600 units for this 50 acres that was going to be redeveloped into Town Village, and it has been. It's taken some time. If you notice when it was rezoned in two thousand and eight, we had a major recession, and then we came forward out of that, there was, it took some time to get through. So it has now been largely, it has been developed, except for this last remaining parcel, which is at the top right. That's Big Shanty. This top parcel is the last remaining undeveloped parcel as part of this overall Town Village. The amazing thing that's happened here is not only the development of Town Village, but coincides with the development and growth of Kennesaw State University. I looked it up, just because I was curious. KSU in two thousand and eight, when this was approved, had a student population of just over 20,000. It has doubled since that time. It's now over 40,000, almost 43,000. That's an amazing growth in that short amount of time. In addition, if you see where this is highlighted, across the street is Big Shanty, then this intersection with Busby. Well, there wasn't a stadium there when this was approved. KSU, its campus has grown, not just its population, its campus has grown, and it's grown to right here, across the street from this, along Big Shanty. Now, this is a central part of the overall KSU campus. It's a stadium that's right there, direct, almost directly across the street to the right of that, our additional inter mural fields, if you're familiar, if you've been up there, inter mural fields and recreation area that's part of the overall KSU campus. All that to say that this project has grown, not in terms of just since two thousand and eight, or grown at all. It's grown up since that time in an area that has also grown exponentially so, and also affected by what's happened with Town Center as well, as we look to see what we can come out, come out the other end with Town Center Mall. But as a result, this project is more student-oriented because of its location. This project has, has as part of its component parts, it has actually purpose-built student housing, that is, excuse me, specifically approved student housing, as well as what are termed as market rate multifamily or market rate apartments as part of Town Village. It also has retail and office components as part of Town Village, as well as recreational aspects of Town Village, that are all present here. Again, this is the last piece and parcel. Since that original zoning, each parcel has come through this exact same process of other business to have its individual site plan approved, do it in, as part of the overall Town Village development, just as we have brought this forward. So this piece, this piece of property that we're talking about now, which is the 3.7 acres, and you're kind of starting to focus in on it, you can see it's the undeveloped piece at the top right entrance, where you have Big Shanty and Hidden Forest Court, is the last piece, and we're bringing it forward. Interestingly enough, as I stated before, Town Village was approved for 1,600 units. Approval of this project, which will be the final one, will mean that the total Town Village unit count is 1,375. So it never even came close to reaching the max. It's 1,375 if, if this is approved. What's being proposed for approval here, again, is a multifamily development at that, there we have it. That's a good time, thank you. Multifamily development that's in keeping and in line with the rest of Town Village. It's specifically designed for this site and specifically designed to coexist and be consistent with the other buildings and developments that are within Town Village itself. And let me step over there and highlight a couple of things for you. So for this proposal, again, Big Shanty Road's here. Hidden Forest Court here is the, really the entry to Town Village. You'll notice that the very first development that went into Town Village was this building here, which is actually purpose-built student housing with ground floor retail and office. Then you also have student housing and then additional market rate multifamily projects as you come down Hidden Forest Court. To point out here, what we're proposing is the exact same height, so keeping the height consistent with the overall approval of the PVC, as well as the consistent with the building across the street, so that it's framed properly as you come in. It's a five-story building with wrap with a parking deck in between, parking deck wrapped by the building itself. There's been some comments about whether this project encroaches into floodplain or stream buffers. There is floodplain that's located here and then continues off here. This project does not encroach into any portion. There's no planned encroachment or development in the 100-year floodplain. And additionally, there's a stream that's in part here. All county and state required stream buffers are being adhered to and being acknowledged as part of this development in full, as well as the county's 75-foot impervious setback in full has been accounted for in its entirety as part of this development. In addition, there's been some commentary about the type of stormwater management that would be at play here. Where it came from, I'm not sure, but this project, as well as all of Town Village, does have its own stormwater detention. There is not a fee in lieu of detention being proposed, suggested, or recommended for this project. Again, this project, like others, will have the same level of underground detention and soil filtration that Mr. Carver explained previously for this, for, for this specific project. In addition, last year, there was a SLUP application for purpose-built student housing here that needed to be withdrawn. So this is now coming back as simply a market rate multifamily, but it will, we believe, certainly be utilized by students, given its location. And we have, as a result, included all of the same level of stipulations that, and conditions that are part of your purpose-built student housing ordinance in this project. In addition, we have included, at the request of Bells Ferry Civic Association, multiple stipulations and conditions that were originally comments from Cobb County Stormwater Management Division on that prior case. And in fact, the letter of October 10th contains those stipulations and conditions, numbers two through 10. So it's eight separate stipulations and conditions that are actually directly from Cobb County Stormwater Management Division, just to ensure that proper stormwater management is incorporated into this plan, and really at the request of Bells Ferry Civic Association. Lastly, as we look at this proposal, again, it is for a total of 240 units. That's consistent with the density that's here as part of Town Village. It's intended to be this, and has already been approved for this. This, again, is not a rezoning. This property is zoned PVC for this use, as an approved use. All that's requested is site plan approval, just like every other parcel of Town Village has undergone that same, undergone that same process, and that's all we're asking in this instance. We have included voluntarily stormwater conditions that weren't a part of the comments for this other business case, and we've put those in here at that request to ensure that we're meeting that. We have confirmed, and absolutely confirmed, that the floodplain and stream buffers are not being impacted and encroached upon. We have confirmed that this project meets the impervious area percentage that was set for the overall rezoning of PVC. And in fact, this project area is, again, less than 70% impervious, just for this project, even though 80% is allowed for the Town Village zoning. With that, we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. With that, we'll hear from opposition. You have a maximum of 10 minutes.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners. My name is Tulun Avard, and I am with the Bells Ferry Civic Association. And we are here in opposition to OB 41. Originally, slide two, please. Originally, in this location, an established residential subdivision was demolished in order to build a planned village community, PVC, consisting of condominiums, townhouses, senior living units, a church, green space consisting of an outdoor amphitheater and retail office space. It was also strongly recommended that the proposed development incorporate an affordable housing component. It was to be a viable live-work-play planned village community. Unfortunately, the area became developer-driven and has turned into just a live area with multiple purpose-built student housing, PBSH, and apartment complexes that have nearly reached the allowable max of 1,600 residential units on 50 acres. As we know, this is the last parcel of land available, and yet another high-density rental development is proposed. Slide three. Town Village has become rental city with, according to law enforcement, a higher-than-average crime rate. We polled all the crimes that had happened, and there were pages and pages and pages. There are already 11 PBSH complexes in the area. In addition, three other apartment complexes have recently been approved nearby totaling 937 units. And another one you just passed as well, which was the C-52 of requesting 250 units, which went down a little bit. In addition, according to Apartments.com, there are over 400 available apartment units in the Town Center area. The market is being saturated with apartment complexes. Why so many high-density developments that require more taxpayer resources being approved, yet we do not have the required infrastructure to support them? The county already does not have enough police officers or firefighters. In addition, the new and enlarged Kennystone Hospital ER is already at overcapacity, with wait times averaging five hours or more. We appreciate the fact that the applicant has agreed to coordinate with local law enforcement to develop a security plan in accordance with the CPTED and to provide onsite management 24/7. But perhaps Town Village should be required to have its own police force. We were disappointed that only a conceptual site plan was submitted and no renderings, elevations, or stormwater information was provided. There was also no mention of impervious surface amount, and so the developer's letter of agreeable steps states that, quote, "percentage of impervious coverage will be provided at site plan review." Slide four. Stormwater runoff is another concern. Over the years, there has been a substantial increase of impervious development along Noonday Creek, increasing downstream residents' flood insurance rates. The BFCA questions why there were no staff comments from stormwater management. In the previously submitted rezoning case in that exact location, SLUP two, there were noted concerns from stormwater regarding wetlands, a flood hazard zone, and disturbed stream buffers. There's also no mention of the January 1st, 2021 stormwater runoff reduction requirement. Since all staff comments are as written or entered into the minutes, it's essential that they be as specific as possible. Slide five. As the county stormwater department originally mentioned, this property contains wetlands, a FEMA-designated Zone A flood hazard, and disturbed steam buff, stream buffers. As shown on this map, it appears to us that a part of the building will be located in a FEMA flood hazard zone, yet the developer's lawyer claims it does not. How is this determined? We appreciate the developer adding to the steps some of the Cobb County Stormwater Management Division's former comments, such as, quote, "agreeing to control stormwater discharges." The applicant also agrees, quote, "to provide comprehensive hydrology stormwater controls during the plan review and permitting process," end quote. The developer of another rezoning application nearby that we just heard, Z-52, submitted a preliminary stormwater analysis for public review. This developer should be required to do the same. It is unacceptable to postpone any stormwater issues until site plan review, which occurs after zoning has been approved. And since the public has no access nor input during the site plan review process, we request that before permitting, this information is brought back for public review and comment. Slide six. This area has declined. Town Center Mall is in foreclosure. The Regal Cinema adjacent to the mall closed, and soon another huge apartment complex will be built in its place. Next to the cinema on Noonday Trail, there was a pond. The Town Center CID Alliance had wanted to convert this pond a unique ecosystem into a recreational park area, since it connects to the trail. The BFCA wrote a letter detailing how this area could become another Chattahoochee Nature Center, which would draw thousands of people yearly to this area. The Regal Theater Complex would have made an excellent Cobb welcome center, museum, and educational IMAX theater. It would have helped revitalize the mall and improve this area. But instead, the pond was drained to be used as an overflow detention area due to all the impervious surface that has been improved along Noonday Creek. And it shows, the slide shows the before and after pictures of when it was a full pond and with all kinds of wildlife. It's an ecosystem, and then now it's drained. Slide seven. In addition, less than a fourth mile due east of this proposed development, on the corner of Big Shanty and Chastain Meadows, a wholesale distribution warehouse is about to be built. The name is being withheld from the public. It will be a 24/7 operation with its own fleet of commercial vans, and semi-trucks will deliver products to the facility nonstop. Over 50 semi-truck storage trailers where we parks, against Big Shanty wrote. The property will be clear-cut and paved, which will greatly increase highway noise and air pollution to the area, since the county is not requiring the facility to erect sound barriers along I-575. The facility will have the appearance of a penitentiary, as it will be surrounded by an eight-foot chain link fence with barbed wire. Slide eight. The area is being renamed Chastain Crossing, which means additional massive distribution warehouses could be in plans for this location. This is not belonging to office service area. There are residential neighborhoods less than a fourth mile away. This belongs in an industrial area, where lower property values impact the quality of life. People, the residents of this area don't deserve this. All these apartments and warehouses, you were all elected on the promise that you would look after the best interests of your constituents. In summary, the BFCA is disappointed that a proposed vibrant planned village community became instead a rental city that was sold off to the highest bidder, who wanted the highest density in order to maximize profits. Town Village, as it is now, was built for the developers and not the residents of Cobb County. Therefore, the BFCA respectfully requests that this rezoning request be denied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Tullard, excuse me. Yes, there was a slide that was shared during your presentation, the master plan.
The original master plan?
Yes, ma'am. Is it possible to see that, please? Thank you. All right, Commissioner, I'll turn it over to you. Okay. Thank you. A couple of things about this. Hidden Forest was, when it was originally zoned in two thousand and seven, I believe, as a PVC, none of us were on this board then, but it has been in for rezoning and other business at least three times. I think this is the fourth, since I've been on this board, and it has been in District Three. And that, I'm, that's why this was, the master plan was revised during those rezoning or other business applications. There were other factors that impacted this, as far as the church is no longer there. The original plan was to build a new church for Grace Point. They have moved out to another location. So we've had a lot of revisions to the original plan, but it was always mostly student housing. The, the, when this came in, I was concerned of why wasn't it proposed for student housing? And the first unit, the first building that was put in, I think it's called U Point now, on the very, on the corner across the street from here, and directly across the street from KSU Stadium, football stadium. They have an easement on here, or restricted use, that it could not be student housing. And that cannot be removed, because they're not willing to do the hat. So that's why it's in as apartments. However, the applicant has agreed to the stipulations in the purpose-built student housing ordinance similar to the last case we heard up here. So I'm going to ask Carl to come up and tell us about the stormwater underground detention and the impact. Okay, for Carl.
Question or answer?
I just have a question about the map itself, about the property as it currently exists, before digging into those. Is there retail at this location today? Is there retail at this location today?
There is retail under the U Point. The first one that was built, there, there's a Subway and, I think, a pizza place or something. There's, there's retail underneath. I don't know that it's at full capacity. I don't think it is, but it's available.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater.
Can you tell us the underground detention and any impact? I know this isn't near any residential. It's right across from campus.
You know, they would have to provide the underground detention similar to that previous case. It would probably be in perforated underground pipes, or it could be in a vault, or something under their deck, or something like that. Or it could be in their parking lot. And they, you know, that would allow them to provide the runoff reduction, and they will, you know, not be able to increase the runoff into the, into the stream. There is, like Kevin said, there is no fee in lieu of detention here, so they will have to provide.
Okay. But underground, and where will it go to float it?
Most likely, there's a good chance they could put it underneath their deck. Do you have their site plan?
But, I mean, where will it end up? In the regional detention pond, or?
I'd have to look and see, but possibly, yes. If this goes to the regional pond, I'm not exactly sure.
Will that be decided in plan review?
Yes, ma'am.
They don't have to meet all the standards?
Yes.
Developmental standards?
Yes.
Okay.
They would discharge into that adjacent stream area.
But not Chastain Lakes, like the last one?
Don't think this one goes, I'd have to look it up. I don't, I'm not familiar with it enough to know if that goes to Chastain Lake.
Okay. I'll, I'll ask the developer. And how will this impact the surrounding area as far as, for the underground detention? Will it make it better or not worse?
It, in any case, where we're providing runoff reduction, it should make it better. Because you're infiltrating, you're reducing the amount of runoff coming from the property,
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you. Yes, Carl, is this in a 100-year flood zone?
Yes, ma'am. I think so.
Okay. So what are the requirements associated with that?
They can't fill in the 100-year floodplain at all. In this case, they, they, they haven't provided a grading plan, so I'm assuming that they're correct and that there will not be any fill placed in the 100-year floodplain.
Okay. So my presumption is then this is going to be built outside of that flood zone?
Correct.
Okay. Couldn't tell them that.
Is that where the, the stream buffer is here on the side?
The stream buffer is 75 feet from basically the top bank of the stream, and so the floodplain is usually contained within that zone. So if they're not encroaching it into the 75-foot buffer, then they're not encroaching into the floodplain.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Carl?
Okay, thank you, Carl.
Amy Diaz, DOT.
Big Shanty is pretty busy, too, with the stadium right diagonally across the street and access from Hidden Forest to Town Center, Ring Road, that area back through here. So what, what do 240 units do to the level of service on Big Shanty?
All the levels of service remain deceptible in both the build and no-build future conditions. So there were no site-generated improvements identified. Now, that, those included improvements that are already going into place, which the signal at Hidden Forest at Big Shanty is in design and is expected to go in next year.
Okay, good. And they do, they do have the two access points?
Correct. They have the right-in, right-out on Big Shanty.
And is the one on Big Shanty that's currently there, full access, that comes on Hidden Forest?
I believe it is blocked by the median, even in existing.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah.
So it's a right-in, right-out?
Right. But Hidden Forest will be full movement and will be signalized.
Yeah, but that's inside the complex.
Yeah. Now, the, the study did go, by the way, the study is conservative. It did the original number of units of 340, so they didn't, they didn't update it, because that's a more conservative analysis. It does show that there's a need for improvement at Bell's Ferry at Big Shanty, but that's already been identified by the Town Center CID and Cobb County, that that's currently going through the, the federal process for intersection control, to see what's going to be done there. We'd probably have a concept for that next year, but it was not heavily enough influenced by this development, for this development to, to be part of that process.
Okay. And, um... We, we did have an updated DRI. I think that's why we held this, to get that information.
Well, they updated the traffic study for this part of the development.
And the traffic study.
I don't believe they went through, back through the ARC process.
Pardon?
I don't believe they went back to ARC and Greta for the DRI process.
But there was one done originally that's in here.
Correct. There was one done originally, and then they have done a traffic study for this most recent one.
Okay. So is the, from the traffic study, was the signal already proposed before?
Yes.
That?
The signal, the signal was assumed as part of the no-build condition, because it was already planned to be going in.
Yeah, so will it be done by next year, you said?
Yes. Yeah. We've had conversations as, as late as last week of how to expedite this as quickly as possible. It is definitely on the fast track for new installations. The issue is signal poles have a supply chain issue, and so we're having to get those ordered, and that's what's slowing us down.
Okay, so this doesn't decrease the level of service on Big Shanty?
Well, they, they all remain acceptable.
Anything else for Amy?
They still have to submit a traffic study per staff recommendations?
Yes. So that, since they had more than 150 units, we requested a traffic study for it. And they'll have, like I said, it's, the traffic study is conservative, but it applies. They'll have that also when they go into the plan review process.
I don't have anything else for Amy. Kelly does. Oh, Kelly, go ahead.
Amy, with the improvements that are going to happen at Hidden Forest Court and Big Shanty with the road, with, Big Shanty Road with the light, how is that going to change the Hidden Forest intersection as it currently is situated? Because I'm guessing you're going to have a dedicated left-turn lane and right-turn lane here?
I know it's going to have a dedicated left-turn lane. I'm not sure if the right is, is through right or right. Like I said, it's currently still under design, but once that design is available, I can certainly supply it.
Okay. The, the reason why I'm asking is because then going back and looking at the site plan, how much frontage is this property going to lose to make those inters, that intersection improvement? The concern being, the building will be then right on the edge of the road, and I'm not seeing where they could then put in sidewalks.
Well, it's my understanding from the construction engineer overseeing this project that we did not need to request any additional right-of-way, and the setbacks should be set from the right-of-way line. So it should still, unless they're requesting a variance on setbacks, it should still be far enough back from the roadway.
So, John, are they requesting variances from setbacks here?
Commissioner Gabriel, they are not showing any variances. When this entire project was approved in 2007, the book, the board approved a 10-foot setback along Big Shanty Road, and they're not asking for a variance from that.
Was there a setback, though, on Hidden Forest?
It's, it's also a 10-foot setback on Hidden Forest, granted in the 2007 zoning action.
Is there, and going back to the site plan, I just want to make sure the distance between the future intersection and the entrance to the new area, that that distance is okay as well?
I didn't have that. Unfortunately, I don't have my GIS up anymore, so it was, it was not flagged as an issue. Of course, it's an existing driveway, so that may have, we may have just assumed that it needed to be there. But given that their only other access is a right-in, right-out on Big Shanty, I would recommend that this remain full access.
Okay. Thank you.
And there'll be a signal there?
And there'll be a signal, yeah. But signals actually, I mean, to the Commissioner's point, signals actually, we have more spacing requirements, because we don't want nearby traffic to impact the signal. But it was not identified as an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have for Amy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Moore, can you come back up?
Your impervious is 60% at this site?
That's correct. For this parcel, in this specific project, it would be 60% impervious.
For this parcel, the last leg of?
The overall impervious. Oh, yes. For the last one at Town Village, this parcel is 60% impervious. The overall allowable impervious purpose zoning of this property is 80%, just by way of comparison or perspective.
And it is in a rack, so it is allowed by 80%, but I'm going to cap it at 70.
And that's, would be perfectly acceptable to us, that's right, for this piece of it.
And then, um, the underground detention and maintenance will be provided?
Correct.
When, when this was first proposed, I think Tulun mentioned green space was part of it?
Yeah, the over, the overall Town Village has a minimum amount of green space that has been exceeded by the overall Town Village zoning. When this was rezoned in '07 as PVC for the whole 50 acres?
Right.
There was a minimum amount of green space slash open space park area, and that has been met and exceeded, actually.
And, um, I know you mentioned that overall, it's not up to the maximum number of units. It's 1375 as opposed to 1,600, I think you said?
That's correct. It was zoned for 1,600, and...
So it's under that, meets that?
It will be well under that, correct.
Okay. And then, the traffic study? When will that be done?
It's been completed. That's what Amy was, Ms. Diaz was speaking of. We turned in the traffic study on October 7th.
I thought we had, but I...
She was speaking from that traffic study that's been submitted. And just want to note, as she was noting, that the traffic light that's currently in design, that'll be here at Hidden Forest and Big Shanty, that was paid for by this development, by this Town Village. It was part of the DRI and recommendations and stipulations and conditions that came forward from that '07 zoning, along with other road improvements that were constructed here. So that intersection has already been constructed in accordance with the original plan to provide for the lanes, and then there were certain elements that had been, including the light, that had been paid for by this development as it went along. So I just wanted to let you know that, this, since you weren't familiar with that piece of it, which I think was a good thing. This development paid for its own when it was warranted at a certain time, and that's now.
Okay. And so are you willing to do the steps from the purpose-built student housing, since we can't zone it that way?
Yes. We have included the lighting, have included the law enforcement's security plan and management. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And what about 55-feet height limit?
What's the height of this? Yeah, that's right. Yes, that's fine. It's just consistent with the height across the street, so that's what this heights have been, so I believe that's correct.
And what's, you're at 240 units?
240, that's correct.
You know what my question is? Can you drop that?
It doesn't need to be 240. Yeah, that's, that has been reduced already, so we're, we're at that number for this project. It's 240 for this one. I'd love to be able to, but again, you know, 1,600 is the, is what it's zoned for, for Town Village. With this approval, we're at 1,375. So we are, you know, 225 units below what this has already been zoned for. That's a heck of a reduction.
Yeah.
At the end of the day.
But that's, um...
And it's, it's less than the U.
This is 3.7 acres.
Right, but it's less than the U in terms of equivalent units. When you convert, according to the county's code, you have an equivalency formula for converting what is designated as student housing to units, and it's less than the
Yes.
Okay, Kevin, I'm going to put you on the spot. If you're maximizing out at five stories, your parking deck is at six.
That's because parking decks, parking decks are six levels, so includes a level that's not a story. In other words, it includes the way parking decks, it doesn't come up above that. A six, you'll see, a six-story or six-level parking deck is equivalent to a five-story building. I don't, somebody had to explain it to me at one point, but that's the reason, because of the way they count it.
Would that first level be below grade?
In part. And then also because you park on the top level, and so, as opposed to stories, and so, think of it like in those terms. That's why you'll always see five-story building, six-level parking deck, or something like that, even for office or residential. It's a good que, I had the same question once, and it finally was explained to me.
So the pools on the clubhouse, not, and, and there's parking on the top deck?
Right. There's, they have parking as well as amenity, rooftop amenity is part of that, that's correct. And then there's also amenity areas within the project itself.
Can I ask staff recommendation, or do you want to? We should have done that first, actually.
John, what does staff recommend?
Commissioner Burrow and Board, the staff would recommend the board commissioners approve the request, subject to the letter of conditions dated October 11th, 2022, from Kevin Moore, subject to the fire department comments contained in the other business packet, subject to the Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet, and all previous, all previous stipulations not in conflict with the... not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect.
Okay. My stip letter says October 10th. Was there one after that?
Okay. So I would amend that to October 10th.
Okay. Okay, I'm ready to make a motion. I make a motion to approve other business 41, subject to October 10th stip letter from Mr. Kevin Moore. Maximum height of 55 feet. Security plan, lighting plan pursuant to the purpose-built student housing ordinance to be included. Maximum of 70% impervious surface. Maximum of 240 units. Final site plan and landscape plan to be approved, I'm sorry, final site plan and elevations to be approved by the district commissioner with review by Bell's Ferry Civic Association. Landscape plan to be approved by arborist and district commissioner with review by Bell's Ferry Civic Association. All stormwater management comments, and fire marshal, and all DOT comments, not otherwise in conflict, and all stipulations to remain in effect, not otherwise in conflict. And no encroachment on wetlands.
So just for clarification, you called out three departments, but any other staff...
Well, all staff comments, I'm sorry, not otherwise in conflict. Pardon? 70%. I said that, I thought. Did I say maximum impervious 70%? Okay.
All right, does that conclude your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll second it. Is there any further discussion or questions? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Commissioners, before we go to our next case, why don't we take a nine-minute break till 11:20? Thank you.
Hello and welcome back to our October zoning hearing. We are moving on to our next other business matter. I'll just turn things over to you, John.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next item is other business item number 50 of 2022, which is to consider a settlement litigation for Galaxy Properties Investment Incorporated regarding rezoning application Z8 of 2021 located in Land Lots 68 and 165 of the 18th District. Property is located on the east side of Hickory Trail and on the southwest side of Veterans Memorial Highway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 50? The record says no one opposed.
Garvis, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. For the record, my name's Garvis Sams and I represent Galaxy Properties concerning this settlement litigation. It comes in the form of an other business application to you. This is regarding an undeveloped piece of property that's at the intersection, as you can see, of Hickory Trail and Veterans Memorial Highway and on the southwest side of Veterans. And I've got a lot to say. I've got no opposition. Your staff's recommending approval. We settle it in mediation. I'll be glad to just speak forever. But John gave me, John gave me a sweet-
How about a 10-minute cap?
But I would, I would suggest that if it's, if it's not an objectionable, if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to offer myself up. But I think the staff might appreciate it if I didn't talk anymore. So that being said, we, we ask that you approve this very congenial, amenable, mediated settlement.
Thank you, Garvis. Seeing no opposition, I will turn things over to Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'll start by asking staff to confirm their recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. And before I do that, I just want to clarify. I read in Z8 of 2021, but this is actually Z8 of 2022. But staff would recommend this be approved subject to the letter from Garvis Sams dated August 16th, 2022, and subject to the stormwater management, Cobb DOT, and fire department comments contained in the original Z8 of 2022 zoning analysis.
Okay, thank you. Garvis, much like you, there's so much that I can say right now, but...
I have a bet going.
Yeah, we have this thing going. But at any rate, I'm glad that we've come to a point of resolution regarding the rezoning application of Z8 2022. This one has been a long time coming, and I know for this particular applicant or retailer, they have been very desirous of being on, on that corridor at that particular area, even going back as far as 2018. But I appreciate the applicant's understanding of the community's resistance to the proposed auto-related use. I am especially, especially appreciative of the applicant's willingness to add a deed restriction to the property to prevent any future auto-related uses. And lastly, of course, thank you to you, Garvis, for your collaboration and working towards a solution that fits the needs of your clients and also the desire of my constituents. And with that, Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve OB 50 2022.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call a question. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you, Commissioner. John said he'd give you another Sweet Tart if I was short, so...
And now, subject to the staff recommendation?
None otherwise. Do we need to reconsider the motion since we voted on this matter?
Okay, we will need to-
It looks like we need to re- I'm sorry.
You can initiate that motion. We just need to reconsider.
Sure. I make a motion to approve OB 50-
Let's move to reconsider.
Oh, okay. I'll move that we reconsider the prior motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call a question. The motion passes 5-0.
You see what happens when you get excited. I make a motion to approve OB 50 2022 to include staff, all staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict.
Second. Okay, in addition to the other conditions that you shared.
In addition to the other conditions that have been shared.
Okay, I'm just asking. Okay, that may be implied. I just want to make sure that that's part of the rest-
I didn't have any other conditions.
As part of the settlement. Well, whatever the terms are of the settlement. Yes, of the other business item. Okay. All right, so we have a motion, a second.
She's totally confused.
Any further discussion? Call a question? Okay, the motion passes 5-0.
Okay, next item is other business item number 52 of 2022, which is to consider a stipulation and site plan amendment for Hal Wilkins regarding rezoning application Z61 of 2002 for property located on the west side of Hillside Greenway, west of the corner road, and Land Lots 214 and 231 of the 19th District. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 52? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
We're waiting while the applicant is pulling up information regarding his matter.
CP, I think, since we're broadcasting, why don't we just go ahead and take a brief recess until that pulls up? You got it? Very, okay. Man, a minute too late. All right, sir, you can go ahead whenever you're ready.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. I just want to remove some trees in my backyard, effectively. There's a, I think there's a buffer zone of about 25 feet. So really, this is just to kind of create a little more value and entertainment for frivolity and merit purposes at my home front. The property is located within the Hawthorne subdivision on Hillside Greenway. Effectively, there's about, from the back property line, the buffer is about 25 feet. The issue is, is there's a lot of older trees that exist in this area. They're within 20 feet of the home. They're pretty hazardous and dangerous at this point. You know, they've been there probably beyond 2002 when I think this zoning stipulation was put in place. Most of the trees are unhealthy and dead. There's a lot of termite infestation, as well as it doesn't necessarily add value to the look and feel of the property. So this is a split screen of existing trees there. Pretty much everything is, you know, again, very aged, very dead. There's a risk of these things falling over and potentially landing on a home or anybody kind of hanging out in the backyard, honestly. And when you look a little closer at what the actual tree trunks look like, you know, again, the termites had their way with a lot of the existing arbor in the area. So these are two trees that were there. There's some more illustrations and screenshots of just what the current state looks like. So, you know, reducing that buffer would help me sleep a little better at night, particularly with storms coming through. And, you know, part and parts, I think there's enough distance between my home, the back line property, and the adjacent properties where I'm located. So in case if there was any concerns with respect to that that zone was put there in place to sort of keep a buffer between the existing homeowners and the noise levels, I don't think that would be of, of any major significance or really material at this point. Questions? Comments concerned?
Thank you.
I mean, I could talk some more like the other gentleman reported, but...
We will be more than happy to call you back up if necessary.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. And again, was there any opposition to this matter?
No.
All right, I'm going to turn things over to you, Commissioner Gambrell. We'll get staff's recommendation as well.
Sure. John, do you want to start with staff recommendations first?
Sure. Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend that the board approve the reduced buffer from a 25-foot undisturbed buffer to a 10-foot landscape buffer. He's asking for 5 foot, but I think 10 foot would offer more options for the arborists to put something there that could actually grow and subject to stormwater management comments. So, you know, this plan that's in the book is going to change because there's a 20-foot drainage easement that's not shown on his plan. That's going to impact the pavilion and spa. So I would also add, after stormwater management comments, that the district commissioner approve the final site plan that shows the location of the accessory structures, and then all previous conditions not in conflict remain in effect.
Thank you. Commissioner Gambrell.
And while I understand why Mr. Wilkins removed the trees, the bigger issue here is the fact that he wants to add structures within this 25-foot building or buffer area. He has a proposed freestanding pavilion and then also a patio with a fire pit. My conflict with staff recommendations is, is this 25-foot buffer was part of a zoning condition, which was part of the rezoning that was approved when this development went in. Also, you can kind of see, looking at the topography here, that the 25-foot buffer has been graded down to what is now the backyard. So there's approximately, looking on G I S, about a nine-foot drop there. So my concern is if we add features onto this 25-foot buffer that was supposed to be undisturbed, how is that going to potentially impact the soundness of that retaining wall that is now here? Again, John mentioned the retaining wall, but he's also going to be carving steps into this retaining wall. Given that this was part of a rezoning and the conditions were agreed to the 25-foot undisturbed buffer, I'm willing to allow for the tree removal because they were dead, but I am not in favor of supporting putting accessory structures in this area.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow.
He's where the R30 OSC mark is. Okay. So is the 25-foot buffer along the rears of-
It's over here.
So essentially, the, the 25-foot rear buffer is there, and then that's where they started then sloping down to create the backyard.
Yeah. But is it, does it carry through to the neighbors on both sides or the whole back of the subdivision?
Yes. The 25-foot buffer is throughout the whole subdivision.
And theirs has remained intact as far as you know?
As far as you know, yeah.
There was a development through yours down from me where they actually put them as a swimming pool with the same type of structures.
These don't ever work. Yes, Commissioner Sheffield.
Just for a point of clarification, if I may ask the applicant to come up. There was mention that there is a slope at the rear of the property.
Correct.
Okay, so where, where the cursor is, go back a minute, you see, right in there, is that currently where the slope is located? And are those bushes there or?
What we've done is leveled and built tiers in that area to sort of flatten that out. So the slope isn't, isn't present, because there's at least two or three tiers there, which is why I'm applying for permit to put the structures up. But I have to have permission to clear the trees.
Okay.
And what we'll do is we're going to put the requisite water tubing, sock drains and such to run the water away from any of the structures that we placed in and ensure that, you know, we don't have ponding and runoff or any sort of compromise to the wall structure that would be there. So the slope itself is still, you know, is present, but now it's all tiered down and flat leveled at this point.
Okay. And how, and how many tiers?
There's really two, and then it's kind of like one decorative tier. So there's one tier where the fire pit will be up on the upper left-hand corner. Then there's a smaller tier where it's going to put some plants or some shrubbery there. Then there's the, the main tier where it's the platform for the pavilion, potentially the hot tub and some trees and some other things.
Okay. And you mentioned that there is a swimming pool that's being installed. Can you point to us or share with us where that is in relation to your property?
Yeah, if you come down lower to about somewhere now close to that cul-de-sac in that area, they would have just highlighted a circle.
Pardon? I'm sorry.
It's not within the 25-foot buffer.
Okay.
I, I mean, you can kind of clearly see it's not within the 25-foot buffer. The other consideration I have here is the amount of changing to a slope that has been currently done. Because again, that changes how water drains. We already know that this property has a easement for stormwater. So the question becomes now, and Carl, maybe this is a question for you, with the amount of changes that have happened to the property without going through a grading, how is that going to potentially impact the adjacent neighbors with stormwater runoff?
Carl, come on up here.
Come on up, Carl. He's like, are you asking me a question or are you making me sad?
Oh, Carl.
She caught you off guard, didn't she?
I'd get an extra cookie next time.
There were. They're gone.
Yes, Carl.
So Carl, I'm, and again, I'm sorry for catching you off guard, but I did not know that there had been grading being done to this retaining wall prior to the presentation here today. Knowing that there is a stormwater drainage easement on this parcel with the changes that have been made by the homeowner, how is that going to impact? And what do we need to do to make sure that we're not causing water problems for other neighbors?
Well, my stipulations call for them to submit an updated site plan that will show those things being outside the drainage easement. And as long as they don't exceed the 35% impervious for that lot, it shouldn't have any impact because the storm drain system is designed for that maximum amount. I think we can turn on the storm drain layer.
But is there a concern about changing how the water flows? Because again, if it was originally graded to have it all flow through the easement, if changes have been made to that grade, is it diverting the way it was originally planned to flow?
Correct. He would have to maintain the, the slope or the pattern in which it's draining into the easement. It, it all depends on where he might put a retaining wall or how he would finalize that slope. But it needs to stay in the easement as close as possible.
There'll be some drop dead creek features that'll uprun that water. Because the way it exists now, it all ends up right where the patio is sort of, you know, ponds right there. So it's going to be easier to make it into the stormwater drain. Just to be specifically aware of that, that's a terrible thing we had in prior conversation. But now what we're doing is running all our water and not get that water moving.
Sir, sir, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought it was going to be a quick comment, but you need to be speaking into the mic for the record.
Your mic?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
What I was saying was that the, the way it exists today, the water was running directly off that slope right down and pooling at the, and ponding right there by my structure of where the patio currently exists. And it would, it was still not really draining off into where the storm drain was. The prior owner put some sock drains on the side of the house to kind of direct some of the water there. But we do receive water coming from the other properties that are from the corner road aspect. But what we're going to do is build the sock drains to help run and redirect that water more to the right side of the property closer to the storm drain. That way, it won't pond right there in front of my door coming out the backyard. And it'll, it'll help facilitate the movement of the water away from the, the actual retaining walls that we're going to use.
Thank you. These are challenging. I mean, we deal with this year after year after year after year. We're putting this undisturbed buffer feature that we have residents encroach on or asked to encroach on. I understand the desire for them, but we just end up here so many times. I just, you know, a property owner should know, and maybe that's a question for the applicant, that they have that, that they have that burden on their property to maintain that as an undisturbed buffer. But I can't tell you how many people come in time after time and ask because it's their property that they purchased. And they would naturally think that they can develop it, you know, as, as they desire. It's just a tough situation. The only thing is here, you could see that the adjacent owners to the west, they have a significant buffer to the property to the right. But that takes nothing away from the fact that this was stipulated. I just hate the fact that we do this, we continue to do this, and we continue to be in this situation. I don't think it's working. Unless it's open, yes. I don't, is this an open space? Is that part of the open space? Oh, the buffer is part of the open space calculation?
So, okay, so my understanding is this is not part of the open space calculation, but as part of the conditions of the rezoning, it was put in there.
And they have the ability to come in and ask a smart fire.
Does it reduce the 33% open space? Or does, that's not part of that?
It's, it's not part of that, but where we have to be careful is, again, it's stipulated as an undisturbed buffer. And, you know, we would hope it was recorded on the plat as such. I, I haven't, is it recorded on the plat as such? So it is recorded on the plat as such. So when Mr. Wilkins purchased the property, he should have seen that it was designated as a 25-foot undisturbed buffer.
I hate these. How do we get around this? How do we not do this?
Not do open space.
Get rid of OSC.
But this is not part of the OSC calculation. Just under, yes. I mean, because I've seen these outside of OSC applications.
Yeah. Normally, we do undisturbed buffer in construction. But this is in perpetuity.
Correct. But then also, we tend to combine the buffer and the landscape, or I'm sorry, the buffer with the setback, which then causes even more problems because we don't separate them out. And when that happens, then yes, they are allowed to disturb all the way to their property line, even though a certain portion of it was supposed to be landscaped.
So if he maintains a 10-foot, what staff recommended, would he be able to put in the accessory structures anymore?
So wordsmithing it, it's only an undisturbed buffer. It's not undisturbed in perpetuity, meaning that it remains screened in perpetuity. So he removed trees due to they were dead, dying, and decaying, which I can understand why they were dead, dying, and decaying because, again, we went in and dropped the property about nine feet to create the retaining wall, to create the, what Carl's term is pancake in order to then start getting stormwater to flow correctly. So I can understand how trees within that 25-foot buffer, their root systems were damaged in the grading process to get to the pancake to be able to build.
Yes, sir, sir, sir. This is not a dialogue unless you're at, unless we call you to the mic. That's okay.
So I can understand how the trees died over time, even though that wasn't the intent. But because of the grading and the construction that happened, it potentially damaged the roots that were there, which then caused the trees to die.
Maybe for Commissioner or for John. So of the 25 feet, the request is to build in 10 feet of that or 15 feet of it?
So staff is recommending to do a, essentially require him to plant a 10-foot landscape buffer and then allow him to build within the 15 feet that's remaining.
Okay. So he's encroaching on the 15 feet?
Well, he'd be encroaching on the 25 feet that was in the stipulation letter originally as to be undisturbed.
But he's also replacing 10 feet of the dead trees, right?
Right, but in the stipulations, it was not undisturbed and to provide visual screening in perpetuity. So since that visual screening is not part of the stipulation, we cannot really enforce him to go back and replant what he took out. we cannot really enforce him to go back and replant what he took out.
What if he reversed this?
But it's not there.
And put the landscape at the very back and the fire pit and all closer to the house?
Mr. Wilkins, can you come back to the podium, please?
We're messing with your backyard.
You guys are invited when I get this thing done.
Sue, the question is, is why are you not proposing to put the fire pit and patio in your, just outside the back of your home? Where your graded flat areas, not upon the retaining wall? Did you ever consider that?
Bringing it down close to the house? It didn't, my neighbors, it just seemed like it didn't, it didn't set right with all the width that I had there. And it was too close to the property itself. So, and I just wanted to make a clarifying point. The trees were dead before we touched anything. I mean, I wasn't sure if that was what you were communicating.
You're okay. You're okay.
So I mean, ultimately, what we wanted to attempt to do is just to have just a little bit of space. And I want the same privacy, you know? I want to restore trees along that back line of the property. I'm not trying to, they were just dangerous. I will put new trees there along with the rock bed and such. I didn't know it was this serious, honestly, coming into this when I bought this home. No one disclosed that this even existed.
I can perceive that that happened. I truly can't.
Yeah, I was a bit unknown. I know ignorance isn't necessarily, you know, you know the rest of it. I'd appreciate any help and leniency.
All right, Commissioner.
So are we done with discussion and questions?
Yes, I can't see if there's any clear consensus of the board on which way to go, but you can certainly help to lead our path forward with the motion.
Okay, so my motion is going to be to deny other business 52 of 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes. Are you going to add that the trees, the dead trees can be, could be removed or replaced or whatever?
Well, and again, that's part of the stipulation. It was only an under-stirred buffer. It did not state that they had to replant. So to me, if, you know, Mr. Wilkins wants to replant to enhance his privacy, that he can do. But there's nothing in the original stipulations that give us the ability to mandate that he replant. So, to me, this is a two-part. You know, he discussed the trees and the removal of the trees, but he did not present what he wanted to do within that 25-foot buffer. It's what he wants to do within that 25-foot buffer that is of concern to the board for our decision. And what he's asking to do is put structures in an area that was defined to be undisturbed. Hence, my motion to deny.
Is there, there's a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? I tell you, I'm inclined to support staff's opinion, but I also, you know, this is the Commissioner's district. And I also know that fortunately with these, once you do for one, just imagine everybody's 25-foot buffer is starting to be, is going to be gone. You know, if there's any consolation, it's just the fact that the adjacent property owners have such a significant, you know, buffer in their backyard, which is making me inclined to do this. But philosophically, I just don't, I'm with Commissioner Gambrell. I just practically, philosophically, I'm with Commissioner Gambrell. Practically, I'm in support of what the applicant is suggesting because I know, once you have a home and, you know, you're trying to fully utilize your space in a way that you can enjoy it. And I just don't see any intrusive impact, again, to the property owner on the west. I just, I just know, once we do it here, just imagine the whole street gone. Sir, I'm sorry. Isn't that?
All right, so if there's no additional discussion, I'll call the question. All right, Commissioner Gambrell's motion passed. It's approved. For one, with Commissioner Sheffield in opposition. Okay, she stated it was an incorrect vote on her part. How can, she would like to modify her vote?
Yeah, my vote is to support the denial of the application.
Since we did for the fire motion, you can ask the board, before it takes up any additional item, to revisit the vote.
To revisit or reconsider? Or resend?
Reconsider it.
Okay, we're, okay, yes, thank you. All right, I move that we reconsider the vote. Is there a second? Any discussion? Call the question. All right. And Commissioner?
Okay, I make a motion that we deny OB 52 of 2022. Second.
Any discussion? All right. The motion passes 5-0.
Okay. And moving on to the last item on the agenda is other business item number 55 of 2022, which is to consider a reduction of lot size for crematory from required 2 acres to 1.75 acres for 4283929 Delaware LLC. Property is located on the western end of Oak Ridge Commerce Way, north of Oak Ridge Road, in Landline 377 of the 18th District. Is the African present? I'd direct you to the African is here. And earlier, there's two people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward. We sworn in.
Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow members of the Commission. We thank you for this opportunity to stand before you. My name is Joe Kennedy. I am, we'll just be open and honest here. I am the brother-in-law to the owner of the property that, of Cheryl Kennedy or Precision Investments. Okay? And she's in the back there. Commissioner, you're familiar with this property from previous times we've had out there. And today, I'm here just to address, first off, let me just say this to you. I'm here to address primarily the actual notice. While it may have been, notice may have been given according to the guidelines, this particular piece of property is located at the very rear of an industrial park. And unless you have business at that industrial park or unless you are an owner and work there, you don't get back to that part of the park to see the zoning notice, okay? Now, something else I would like to bring forward, and there's some history here with Commissioner Cupid, but not to say she remembers or wants to get involved, but there is a trailer park that's actually right adjacent to this particular piece of property as well as residential properties here.
Sir, stop for a moment, please.
We're the opposition, yes. I thought.
Okay. Okay, I couldn't, thank you.
Not my fault.
I couldn't follow. Thank you. We're going to restart the clock. We're going to, yes.
Go back in time.
Rewind and hit reset and allow this application to be brought forward by the applicant.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Thank you.
You're not here every day.
Thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to present. I'm going to offer just a little background and then try to.
Thank you. If you can just share your name for the record.
Oh, sure. My name's Misty Search. I'm with Gateway Services.
Thank you.
Our company was founded in 1996. We are the largest pet funeral home cremation facility in the United States, offering dignified and respectful pet after-care services. We have over 200 facilities in 40-plus states with several in some of the most restrictive communities. And often, we exceed any local and national regulations, including EPA and any other environmental agencies that oversee our locations. Across the country, we operate in single-tenant buildings, as well as we have locations that are multi-tenant buildings with just a demising wall separating us from our neighbors. The location is already zoned correctly for our use, and our request is related strictly to the size of the parcel. We will offer jobs to local residents and much-needed support that provides grieving and memorial services to pet parents. We will comply with the fire department comments that were submitted to the board, along with the DOT comments that were submitted as well. We greatly appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Charles Pedrick, Director of Machine Maintenance, Facilities, and Environmental Permitting for our company. This site, one of the things that we are regulated by is the Clean Air Act, which, you know, the EPA monitors, as well as the state of Georgia, you have your own regulations. When, when or if we get approval, we file for air permit for our machines. And we are required to uphold those standards that are put forth on us. We also, on our machines that we will place into the site, they will have what's called a continuous emissions monitoring system. And they will monitor the emissions temperature of these machines. If at any time, these machines go above 5%, we get an audible alarm and our team at the site can adjust and fix that issue right away. Generally, if anything like that happens, it is human error. These machines generally run from 0 to 5% opacity, as is. And the only time something can, would go above that would be human error or a machine failure. We do have our own machine maintenance team. We also use third-party machine maintenance people. With the state of Georgia and many other states, you have regulations that just stay below with opacity. Some say you can never hit 60% opacity. Some air permits state that within a six-minute period, you cannot have three minutes total of 20% opacity. And like I said, our machines run at 0 to 5%. There are not, you know, when you look at this site, you may see a heat signature, but nobody is going to know what we are doing. There are no smells. There are no sounds. There are no chemicals. Their foot traffic to our facility is very low. We are actually, about 98% of our business comes from local veterinarians that we service already in this area. Another 2% would be retail. So if your pet was to pass away at home and you wanted to bring your pet directly to us, we could provide a funeral service for you. We do the same for police canines. Those are free, you know? And, you know, this employee-wise, just, you know, traffic into the area, we're looking at maximum of 15 employees where first, maybe five come in at 6:00 a.m. and they get on the road. They're out and you don't see them until about 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. We have two shifts and we spread apart. You know, we follow whatever those regulations are with us with operating times of the day. If you have any questions about our business, what we would do, the runnings, I mean, please, please ask, and we are here to give you those answers. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we will hear from opposition. No problem. Getting your steps in today.
You're only new. Well, again, my name is Joe Kennedy. I am the brother-in-law to Cheryl Kennedy, who is the owner of the business, Precision Investments, owner of the property. Let me just say this. My sister-in-law and brother purchased this property back when it was new and built the building there, when the development was created. Actually, it was in 97. I think it was 2000 when they purchased the lot and built. And I am a real estate broker, been in the business now. If I live till next year, I'll start my 50th year in the real estate business in Cobb County. And so I'm a little familiar with this development. One of the primary reasons that we opted for this development is because of protective covenants. And as you guys have been discussing already this morning, the buffers. And there's a large buffer at the rear of this property, and I'm speaking of theirs. I'm not specifically sure what the buffer is with theirs. But I know we had to build the building and had to engineer the building by surveyor to get the building fit to the lot to comply with the buffers. And that is the appealing part of that development is that it has been protected. Now, was mentioning to you earlier about notice, I can only say that historically, we have had a lot of the fellow property owners who actually, and most of these people are not corporate investment owners, that type of thing. They're end-users in this development. So it's a small business end-user who actually owns their building. And most of them that we have heard from had no idea this was coming up today. And I know there's a yellow sign there, but again, it's in the back of the development. And nobody from the mobile home park or nobody from the residential area, I'm sure, is aware. I'm sure maybe there was some attempt to send notices out, but that I can't, I can't specifically ask for. You know, the, a couple of the issues that we have, and I know, I believe it's like we indicated in the information that we sent to the public comments, we believe they're probably trying to be good neighbors. Don't know that for sure because nothing is 100%. But I could tell you, if you go out onto the internet, and I know you can't believe everything you get out on the internet, but there are some reliable sources there that indicate that there are not 100% pure emissions that come from a crematory. And I, they actually owned, were tenants in a building before building this building over in Highlands Park. And I'm sure some of you remember what happened in Highlands Park with the emissions from the dental equipment that had the potential risk of cancer, et cetera. We don't know. And so, for sure. But also, they've asked for a reduction in the size of the lot. Well, again, Cobb zoning says 2 acres for this type of use. They're reducing the density. And if you're, and let's think about that, a quarter of an acre, we have a lot of developments today that a house is built on a quarter of an acre. So that's reducing the density. But that has an impact also on the, if you will, the marketability of the neighborhood, of the development, as well as, you know, just simply aesthetically appealing, you know, when you actually start lowering density. So we're concerned about that as well. I understand that on the property adjacent to it, and they can simply annex that extra acre. But I know from a financial standpoint of developing an adjacent lot, they want every little bit that they can possibly get to maximize the value for the adjacent lot. And we're concerned that this is going to establish a precedence in this development to come before you asking for changes to density of a development that is already protected by protective covenants, as well as the actual Cobb zoning. And so we are, we have several issues that we're concerned with. And we would just like, I guess I should say, if nothing else, give us a time, give us time to get out there and let the neighbors know so you get a positive impact from the community before we make a bit of change to put potential particulate and nonparticulate emissions on elevation back to the trailer park. It's a higher elevation than what this building is actually set on. We have a photograph of it. You can see the elevation. That's where that trailer park is located, as well as the, or other homeowners there in that neighborhood. So with that being said, they've made an investment there, as have many of the other property owners there, to actually try to maintain the density, to maintain a quality industrial park. And we know what industrial parks can ultimately evolve to. And hopefully, we can work to keep this from ever getting to that place. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other speakers in opposition? Okay, Commissioner Sheffield, turn over to you if you can ask John.
Yep. John, if you would, share with us staff recommendations.
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend the board commissioners approve the request. Subject to lot size be reduced to 1.75 acres for the crematory. Number two, landscape buffer along the west property line to be 60 feet. Number three, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. And number four, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet.
Okay. I do have a question for the opposition, Mr. Kennedy, if you would approach.
And also, while he's making his way up, John, there was a comment with respect to where the signs were posted, and also notification to the adjacent neighbors. Can you just discuss that?
Yeah, the required sign for other business was posted on the property on Oak Ridge Commerce Way. And Mr. Kennedy is correct, you know, most of the folks who own businesses in here probably won't see it, because this is at the very end of the road. And...
But was it properly posted?
Yes, it was properly posted.
Okay. And the letters to the adjacent neighbors?
They did, they did mail out letters to people within 1,000 feet of this property.
Okay. All right, thanks. Two things, Mr. Kennedy, at least from me. Do you know how tall your sister-in-law building is?
It's not more than about, it's one-story building, and so it's probably 12 feet.
Okay.
It is a warehouse in the back. It is a warehouse, so it may be, max about 15 feet.
Okay. And based on what we have here on the screen, where is that in relation to the subject parcel?
Two parcels down. In the cul, they are, right at the very end of the cul-de-sac, and if you're facing their building, that property is located to the left. Two properties down on the left.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
And this is, like I said, we're the closest with my sister-in-law's building. We're the closest, along with Huskavarna, and this proposed crematory to the residential neighborhood and the Mont Family Trailer Park neighborhood as well.
Okay. Do you all have any questions for opposition or Mr. Kennedy? No?
Sir, did your sister-in-law share with you that she did not receive a letter?
She did not receive the letter.
Okay.
John, is there a way that we confirm if a person, or if it was sent to a person?
Yes, we can call the applicant back up here. Misty, but she did send out the letters mid-September, it looks like, to people within 1,000 feet. And she did send me the certified return receipts, and I have those in my office.
Okay.
But she can confirm that if you want to call back up here.
Okay.
I do have a couple of questions for her also, so...
Okay, we'll have her approach. Thank, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can he point out on this map where, what building is his sister-in-law?
Sir, it's right down here, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, here, sir.
Is it the one north of that?
I want to confirm. I'm looking at it upside down. So that is their building. Building to the left was owned by Swafford, then Huskavarna, and then that building is to the left.
Okay. So is your building where the cursor is currently hovering over, is that your sister-in-law's?
Yes, that's the Precision building, yes.
Okay, thank you. If the applicant would approach.
Sir, why don't you have a close seat?
You say you have a question?
I do have a question, and this is regarding the retort for the crematory.
Yes.
Is this business licensed by the state of Georgia, the Board of Funeral Service?
Yes, we do have four facilities currently in the state of Georgia.
And they are regulated by the Board of Funeral Service?
I'm sorry?
And they are, they are regulated by the Board of Funeral Service in the state of Georgia?
Yeah. So we're part of the IAOPCC, which is International Association of Cremation and Cemeteries. And, but, yes, we do have certifications at all of our sites, secretaries state numbers and certification.
Okay, so do you have, you are a member of the state board, then? Because there is a state board that regulates crematories in the state of Georgia, and it's under the Department of Funeral Service? I was just wondering if you were part of that.
I would have to verify with another team member to get that information.
Okay. And board, and chairwoman, the reason why I ask is because the state board of Funeral Services is a state board that regulates crematories in the state of Georgia? So they do inspect these once a year, and they do require maintenance once a year on the crematory devices. And I was just asking that, to make sure that they were going to be in compliance with the state board requirements and the EPD requirements regarding emissions?
Yes.
Okay.
And I presume, does that cover pet crematories, or is this just...
Well, and that's why I was asking, because the state board, it just says crematories. It doesn't, it doesn't make a difference between human or pet.
Yeah. In the majority of states across America, the pet cremation is not necessarily looked at in the same way as a human crematory. Human crematories, they burn caskets sometimes with that stuff, and there's different requirements, but every requirement that we are supposed to have, whether it be carcass hauling permits, you know, EPA, or like you're saying, the state permits, we comply with, and we do. So if it is a requirement, yes, we do that. I apologize, I don't have that exact information with me for the state of Georgia, for other sites, but we are in compliance across the state.
Okay.
We have locations here.
Yeah.
Okay. Am I allowed to make a comment, or is it only...
I would ask that it be a response to a question of a commissioner, since you already had time to present.
So there was a mention that you have 200 facilities. How many are in Georgia?
I'm sorry, what is that?
How many questions, how many facilities are in Georgia?
Four or five.
Okay. And you also mentioned that, that you have licenses at the other locations, but would a license be required at this location, and I'm talking outside of the state license?
So a license to cremate, or, so the environmental protection, or the state of Florida's environmental protection company, or DEQ, they're going to regulate our cremation, our emissions. So we have to get an air permit to operate the machines. So we will have that certificate there. We also get certified through the IOPCC for cremation training, cremation certification for our site as well. The manufacturers who bring in the machines, we also get certified on their machines. Any other, for, I contacted, actually, the Transportation Division recently in the state of Georgia, just to make sure that crossing state lines, you know, from Alabama to Georgia and stuff, we're, we're adhering to every rule that we have to follow.
Okay. And this question is from Misty. With respect to the notifications, do you mail the notifications at the, at the deadline date?
I mailed out 60-plus notifications. They were all sent out certified mail. They were stamped by the United States Post Office, and I forwarded copies to Mr. Peterson as soon as they were sent out. So he has copies of all of them. They have the names and the addresses of every person that was sent out. They're sent out to the property owners. So as far as the, all of the residents that are next to us at the mobile home parks, they didn't receive them. The property owner did.
Okay. And you met the deadline date for the mail?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
I think that's all. Do you guys have any questions?
I don't know. I can't tell, but that may not be within 1,000 feet.
That's a good question. See if maybe, excuse me, can our staff measure the distance between the subject property and the property north of the north cul-de-sac?
That's a really good point.
That's within 1,000.
That's less than, yeah.
Is it to the door, or just to the property, to the property line?
I mean, even if it's just 300 feet, it's going to be less than, it's definitely within 1,000 feet.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
The name and address of your sister-in-law's can be verified on the list. You got the list of mail.
Okay. My only concern is, at this point, not being able to confirm the status with the state.
So we, any certification that we're required to receive, we cannot file until we get approval for zoning and actually assign lease. So this is part of the process, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Okay. Do you guys have anything else?
No, I mean, issue to me is notice, but I mean, this is for, this is kind of a variance application. The use comports with LI. It's a courtesy to be able to communicate with the neighbors, but short of the size requirements of the property, they would be able to move in and operate, I perceive from the application. So with that, I got in trouble seeing this a time prior, but it could go either way, and I support you in which direction you would go. I have understanding for either holding it or voting on this today.
Well, I believe that the, you know, based on the applicant's confirmation that the notices were sent, and there were even some to return, with, with the adjacent community, there's a mention that it's a mobile home park, so it's likely, or there's a possibility that the owners may not live at those units, but that's not to say that the owners did not receive notification. So I'm okay with that, but that's all I have. But you guys can have a seat. Oh, I'm sorry, you have a question? Go ahead, go ahead.
Do you know who owns the property to the right of the yellow outline, your property?
They're here. They're present.
Okay. Have you approached them as far as if they're agreeable to it, or if they have property they could get you to two acres?
They're actually our landlords. So they're, they're with us today, supporting this action.
Okay. But, so they own your building and this beside you?
Correct. Yes. I don't know if there's different entities involved, or different ownership groups, but they own that building as well, or that parcel.
Okay. So you don't own the property that's adjacent to this subject parcel?
Well, we're the tenants, so we don't own either parcel. And the parcel size isn't changing. The parcel, so that was one thing that was mentioned. The parcel size is 1.75, and the building exists there currently. So we're not asking to change the size of the parcel. We're only asking to change the size of the parcel as it's related to our use, if that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay, yeah. I'm going to ask you a question that...
Of course.
Maybe rhetorical, but is time of the essence with this application?
It is. On the grid, yes.
What is the hesitation?
Just, again, you know, if there's opportunity to speak with adjacent property owners, I always think that's advantageous. They're going to be neighbors working with each other. I think, you know, having your fellow neighbors know what's going on, and having some type of discussion is always helpful. Sometimes when we have applicants come in, we'll encourage them to have a community meeting. I mean, this is an industrial area, it's a business area, so I don't sense the same level of charge that sometimes we see in residential areas where they have zoning applications. And so it'd be a nice to do, but again, not a requirement. It's just an inquiry if that would be possible. But, again, I'm going to leave it to our commissioner to decide the path forward.
Okay. I'm inclined to support this application. The question, and I know I've gone around with this with Mr. Peterson, we are allowed, under our code, to grant variances up to 25%. If we look at what two acres is by square feet, this is essentially a 13% reduction. However, conversation is, as in our code, two acres is defined as R80, which is 80,000 square feet, which means this application is only reducing it by maybe 5%. So to me, that's, that's pretty minor. The use is allowable, and I would be in support of this. The applicant has done all that they are required to do. Is receiving notification and issue, yes, because we're hearing that more and more often. So maybe that's something that we need to do internally, is to review that process. But I don't think this applicant should be penalized for a system that is not working.
I agree. Thank you. This is something else. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
One other thing to note, as I did go online just now, just to look up odor of crematories, and it looks like the more modern systems do not emit a smell. And that may have been the case with more dated systems. But, again, that's, if there was a meeting, that's something you can communicate to help ease the concerns of adjacent property owners.
And then, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to join in.
No, it's okay. Why not?
It's actually a question from Mr. Kennedy, when he...
Okay.
You guys can just switch out for a moment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had shared, and you reminded me with your, with your question, you had shared that you had looked up crematories...
Yes.
...and emissions. Was, were your findings specific to their company?
No.
Or were you just looking generally at crematories?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
We did not know their company, and this, there's, here's effects of cremation of the environment online, and let's see.
Right. But the reason why is because human crematories, I'm sure, emit different things, and it also goes to the technologies within. So I was just curious if it was specific to their company.
Well, not their company, but pet cremation, yes. I mean, I don't know the name of their company.
Okay, so pet cremations.
May I share this?
Yeah.
You can submit it, I guess.
It doesn't hurt at all, because I looked at odor, but, you know, there is, I'm looking, there's the CO2 emission associated with.
And I'll just read this real quickly. "As a result, the smoke rises into, this is just a part of it, into the atmosphere and has a negative impact. The carbon dioxide emissions are also problematic. They result in nearly 7 million metric tons of emissions each year. Mercury is also emitted during cremation, although generally only from those who have, and this is dealing with people, with feelings and such. And it is less common during cremat, I'm sorry, during pet cremation to have the mercury, that much mercury." All right. And then it says, "Cities have placed limitations on how long some crematories can run their fires, and for how long." Because this, this fire, I understand, gets up to 2,000 degrees Fahrenheit. And so is it going to be ran constantly? Is it going to be ran two hours a day? How long? But it's, it's quite hot. And where there's fire, there's going to be smoke and emissions. You can't get rid of all of the emissions. And that is part of what happened over at the, at the Highlands Park.
Okay. And, and just for the record, what's the source?
Uh, it's cut off. But it, all you gotta do is Google pet cremations and emissions, and you can see that. But I know, I can't do it right now, but...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I had an opportunity also to Google some information last night on pet crematories, and, you know, in finding and discovering some of the more, some of the more updated technologies with respect to cremation. And so I'm encouraged, I was encouraged by the presentation by the applicant earlier, and sharing some of those things in which they're also regulated by, by the state and the Clean Air Act. They need to apply for a permit for a Clean Air Act. So I, I don't think that it may be what we may think in terms of what crematories have been in the past. There has been significant, significant updates to, to the technology. This application does fit into the required, I'm sorry, it does, it's located in a primarily industrial area. The current zoning category allows for the proposed use, but the challenge, obviously, and that's why we're here today, is that the code also requires two acres for the crematory. The applicant is requesting a variance of 10,890 square feet, a 50-foot... A fifty-foot buffer is required, and the applicant has agreed to add an additional ten percent buffer totaling sixty-foot landscape buffer. The landlord owns the adjacent property, is that correct, is what I heard? The landlord owned the adjacent property and can, I guess, alternatively deed twenty-five, the point-two-five acres to meet the requirement. However, in doing so, the trade-off is that we would lose ten-foot buffer to the adjacent So I think that to grant the point-two-five acres will add an additional layer of protection to the nearby residents. And with that, I'm ready, I'm prepared to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I make a motion to approve OB fifty-five with the following stipulations, that the building architecture is to be approved by the district commissioner, and all other staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
All right, I'll second. Is there any additional discussion or questions?
I hope there's opportunity today or in the near future for the opposition and the applicant to talk, and to also to have your sister-in-law meet with them as well.
Thank you.
I'm going to call the question. The motion passes five-zero. I perceive this is the last matter for today?
We are complete.
All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.